At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for January 18th, 2024, beginning at 6:44. Members of the public may access the meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more of our trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be tolerated. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or may be escorted out by security. We welcome civil input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with our opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Haynes in leading us into pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You made me see that text. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda is student performance by Corey Club Chorus. Ms. Foster?
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the Board, Dr. Wertz, everyone, a very large group here with us tonight, everybody watching online. This is the perfect way to kick off 2024. We have the Corey Cubs Chorus with us tonight. Give them a big hand before they get started. Because I'm going to tell y'all something very, very exciting about these kids. They are one of only three elementary school choirs in the entire state of Texas that is going to be traveling down to San Antonio on February the 8th to perform at the Texas Music Educators Association Convention in San Antonio. Are y'all excited? Yes, we're excited for you. They were founded in the early 1990s as the Corey Chorale. And this group of singing students, they just brought music to their campus all the time. And since their inception, they've sung at sporting events, they've done groundbreaking ceremonies, local nursing homes, and lots and lots of district events like they're doing tonight. Many of the choir members have gone on to perform in their school musicals, they sing in the Arlington Children's Chorus, they've become members of the Texas Choral Directors Association Elementary Choir. Guys, they just do it all. They strive to spread happiness through music and the joy of performing every chance they get. This is the first time they've been invited to sing at that conference in San Antonio, and they want to say a very special thank you to the Board of Trustees, to all of the administrators, to their teachers, and to everyone who's supported them to be able to take that trip down to San Antonio. Today, they're going to sing one of their selections that they'll perform there. It's called "Cici Ni Moha," which is Swahili. I did that really well, right? For we are one, and that means all human beings have much in common. So they're under the direction of our fabulous Felipe Rosales. And I saw our proud principal of Corey is here as well, Cynthia Anthony. Felipe, we're going to turn it over to you and the Corey Cubs Chorus.
In the darkness of the night, in the glory of the morning, we walk along the paths to find our way. Heya, heya, Cici Ni Moya. Heya, heya, Cici Ni Moya. Heya, heya, Cici Ni Moya. Heya, heya. And we start here together and lift our hearts and soul to the rhythm of this moment in our lives. Heya, heya, Cici Ni Moya. Heya, heya, Cici Ni Moya. Heya, heya, Cici Ni Moya. Heya, heya. Heya, heya, Cici Ni Moya. Heya, heya, Cici Ni Moya. Heya, heya, Cici Ni Moya. Heya, heya. Heya, heya. Heya, heya. We are one.
That just sounded like a group of angels, didn't it? Wow. Beautiful, beautiful voices. We'll give everyone a minute to get situated. That was just beautiful. We are so proud of them, so proud. Beautiful, beautiful. I'm so glad they're going to get the opportunity to perform down in San Antonio. That is a big deal for an elementary. Very, very proud. All right, next we have our Student of the Month. Yes, ma'am, Student of the Month, we're ready.
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the Board, Dr. Wertz. It is truly an honor to have this opportunity to recognize one of our amazing Lamar Vikings, Emiliano Gutierrez Berlanga. He attended Butler Elementary, Schalkeford Junior High, and of course, is a senior at Lamar High School. The reason why we select Emiliano is because of his commitment to the entire Lamar community. He is involved in many things, and I'll share some of those things with you. But upon being named Principal of Lamar High School, my first student email came from Emiliano. Yes, he was requesting a meeting so he could share the vision from the perspective of the student body as far as what they wanted for Lamar High School. And he has not stopped working on bringing that to life at Lamar High School. He's committed to working and supporting both teachers and staff on our campus, along with his peers. One of the things that I like about Emiliano, he's always willing, again, to provide suggestions on Lamar. And so just recently, I was able to bring him along with some other club presidents about the next steps for Lamar. And he truly is a leader on our campus. One of the things that we talked about is that his desires for life after he graduates from Lamar High School. He has a desire to attend a top 20 college, and just last week, completed his interview with MIT. And so we have our fingers crossed for at least one of the top 10, but a top 20 colleges. So he's well on his way. But when I tell you all the things that he's involved in at Lamar High School, I asked him to send me some information. He sent me a three-page resume, front and back of all those things that he's involved in at Lamar and in the community. And I'm just going to share some of those things with you tonight. He's a member of the Academic Decathlon Honor Division, a Student Leadership Advisory Board Member, better known as SLAB, Student Council President, Advanced Placement Ambassador Mentor Program, the Lamar Arts Club, Blue Curtain Theater, the Key Club, HOSA, Future Health Professionals. He's a part of the Robotics Club, LULAC, ThorCorps, Dungeons and Dragons Club, and he does our morning announcements as well. In the community, he participates in the Youth Leadership Arlington and has also participated in summer programs at the University of Michigan and MIT. He truly exemplifies what it means to be a Viking and to be a part of the Viking fight, never dies culture. I present to you Emiliano Gutierrez Berlanga.
Thank you, President Fowler and Dr. Wertz and the rest of the school board for having me tonight. It's an honor to be amongst familiar faces. I'd like to thank my counselor, Ms. Maroni, and Ms. Casey, as well as all my teachers at Lamar High School, because they have helped me and supported me through all my endeavors, and I do mean all of them. Today, I have my brother, Jose, my father, Haroldo, and my mother, and my best friend, Ilya.
Ooh. Truth hurts.
Finally, I'd like to thank God and AISD as a whole for providing me with a myriad of opportunities and the ability to grow and improve upon my own future. From K through 12, AISD has allowed me to take charge of my education and future through a variety of programs and organizations. As I continue through my final semester at Lamar High School and AISD, all I can say is thank you.
Emiliano, what do you do in your spare time?
You sell Girl Scout cookies.
Of course he was. Of course he was. We are so incredibly proud of you and impressed with you. You make all of us proud, and we know that you're going to have a great future, and we so look forward to seeing what you do in your future. Is it too late to run for President of the U.S.? Because I'm thinking you could handle that position just fine.
Thank you.
We're proud, and please, we'd like to know where you make your decision, where you end up, whether that be MIT or somewhere else. And you'll always be a part of the Arlington family, and we welcome you home anytime. May the Superintendent and I come down and give you something?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Emiliano, we are so proud of you. And if you notice, each one of us is wearing an AISD pin, and you have to earn these pins. And we feel like you are worthy, and you have earned the right to wear one of our pins. So please accept this on behalf of the AISD and know how very proud we are of you, and we hope you'll keep in touch with us.
Thank you.
So in my role, I have an opportunity to meet all sorts of students, and Emiliano was one of the very first ones I met here when I was named as interim superintendent. And students are products of their parents and their family, and you all should be very, very proud. I have to say, in the 24 years I've been in this business, I have yet to meet someone probably as driven as Emiliano. And that says a lot considering I don't even work at Lamar. So we're very proud of you. I have heard your list of schools that you've been going to. MIT is just one of several really, really good ones. So please do let us know where you end up landing, and we're going to be watching your future in bated breath. So congratulations. And this is just a little token from us.
Essay winners. Ms. Foster?
Yes, as we wrap up the Arlington Advancing the Dream Celebration in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., we do it with one of our ongoing traditions. One part of the four-day celebration weekend is when we all get together to hear the essays and see the art competition. Here to talk about that and to introduce our winners is our own Aaron Peralas, who is our Executive Director of Family and Community Engagement and also Chair of this year's committee. Aaron, come on down.
Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, members of the Board. This year, I've had the honor of serving as the Chair of the Arlington MLK Four-Day Celebration Committee. Working together, representatives from UTA, TCC, the Arlington Ministerial Alliance, the City of Arlington, our own AISD, and a cohort of dedicated community volunteers, the committee hosts one of the biggest celebrations in the nation that honors the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. As part of the celebration, students from the Arlington community, our Arlington community, serve in many capacities such as performing, sharing their talents, and volunteering at our weekend events. One vital aspect of the celebration is our Arlington community students using their imagination and their creativity in the art and essay contest. The students did a phenomenal job depicting this year's theme of advancing the dream, a path forward to impact change across generations. Tonight, it is my honor to recognize the amazing art and essay winners that were recognized Friday evening at our MLK Advancing the Dream Gala. And we're fortunate to have several of our place winners here this evening. So at this time, I'm going to ask them to join me as I call their name. If you'll come forward and face the gallery, and then we'll be able to recognize you and applaud you. So let's start with our art winners. Third place, representing Bowie High School, is Alexis Alvarez. Alexis received a $500 scholarship. Alexis? Second place, representing Lamar High School, was Nayeli Sanchez. Nayeli received a $750 scholarship. And our first-place art winner, and I'll remind everyone that this art was showcased and depicted throughout the MLK Weekend on our booklets, on our Advancing the Dream t-shirts, and all of our marketing collateral for the celebration. First place was awarded to Jusani Blackiller from Martin High School, and Jusani was a recipient of a $1,000 scholarship. Moving on to our essay winners. We had some incredible essays that the essay committee had a chance to review and learned quite a few things from as well. Here this evening, we have our third-place recipient, Nicole Guajardo, representing Sam Houston High School. And Nicole received a $500 scholarship. Now, we do want to recognize our second or first-place essay winners. They were not able to join us this evening, but we do want to recognize them. Second place was awarded to Dina Moaline, representing Martin High School. She was a 12th grade student at Martin High School, and she was a recipient of a $750 scholarship. And then first place went to Joy Lewis of the Oak Ridge School, and she received a $1,000 scholarship. Now, our students do phenomenal work, but creating that opportunity, and a big part of the leadership behind that opportunity are the chairs of those contest committees. And so I do want to recognize our very own Lynn Nguyen, who has chaired the art contest for many years. And then also Lisa Fields, who has chaired the essay contest for many years as well. And I would like to take a moment to recognize teachers that support students as they meet accolades. And so any art teachers that may be in the gallery, any of our social studies, and our history teachers, the arts teachers, those of you at home, thank you for all your support of our students. Let's give these wonderful students another round of applause. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to recognize them.
So much talent. We're so proud of AISD students, so much talent. We are now ready for the School Board Recognition Presentation.
President Fowler, members of the Board, Dr. Wertz?
Hang on one second.
One second.
One second.
Please hold.
Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge our MLK Committee folks that are sitting in the audience here. If you could please stand and be recognized for your tireless efforts, pulling off an amazing, amazing weekend. From the bottom of my heart, from our hearts, thank you for all the efforts that you've placed on this year, and I know all of you every year that you do this. And for those that may not know, the lady in red, Ms. Shirley Adams, received the Living Legend Award, and she deserves recognition here in this chamber.
Thank you, Dr. Raj, and I echo his thanks. It's been a wonderful weekend filled with all kinds of activities, and the gala on Friday night was just wonderful. We had such a good time, and we appreciate the invitation to be there. Everything's been really nice. Now, Ms. Foster?
Absolutely. Now, I know y'all don't like this because you're very humble, but too bad. It is School Board Appreciation Month in the great state of Texas, so this portion of the program is to say thank you to all of you who helped to run our school board. One thing that I like to say every year, just as a reminder, or for some people, it's new information, these are elected officials, but they are unpaid. They are volunteers. They have full-time jobs, they have families, and they spend their time after work, on the weekends, whenever they have free time, working on these projects that help to keep our school district, one of the strongest in the state of Texas. There are many, many hours you don't see when they're not here, sitting at their desks with their microphones, many hours behind the curtains. So all of us, on behalf of all of our staff and our community, we want to say thank you to all of you for what you do every single day for the betterment of kids all across our city. You've heard a lot about some traditions tonight, and we have traditions around this too during School Board Recognition Month. Each year in January, there's a theme, and this year's theme is locally elected, community connected. So every year, we go to a school and we ask students to draw the theme and present that theme to each one of our board members. Our school that was selected this year to provide the artwork for School Board Month is Peach Elementary. Oh, yes. You always knew when Peach is in the house. Sarah Thompson is the art teacher with Peach, and she's here tonight. I'm going to ask Ms. Thompson to come forward and share all of the wonderful stories about the creation of this art for School Board Appreciation Month. Ms. Thompson, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, and the rest of the members of the school board. My name is Sarah Thompson, and I'm blessed to be the art teacher of Eddie and Debbie Peach Elementary. Let me take this moment to thank my husband, one of my children, and of course, whenever Peach is in the house, Peach is in the house. So thank you to my principal, Dr. Ramos. She will be a doctor one of these days. And to the rest of the faculty that came to support me. I stand in front of you as somewhat of a trifecta. As a product of ASD, a Blanton Eagle, a Carter Cougar, and graduated as an Arlington Colt, as a teacher, having served all 21 and counting years of my career here, and as a parent of four amazing children who have either graduated from or who are thriving here in Arlington ISD. Let's just say, as both a teacher and a parent, I am very thankful for AISD and the work you volunteer to do as a school board. The school district is set apart. Through the selfless work of the school board, you put the right people in the right places, you tackle the tough decisions and put policies and opportunities in place with the end result of student success. You believe in the whole child education with not just a focus on academics, but you value fine arts, athletics, and you have paved the way with lifelong opportunities within the specialized programs created in AISD. Students graduate with more than a diploma. They graduate with skills and abilities that pave the way for their future. This year's theme is locally elected, community connected. Locally elected? Well, that's while you're sitting in these seats. Those that voted for you had faith in the work that you set forth to do for this community, teachers, families, and students. Jobs well done. Community connected, that's the heart of it, isn't it? It's seeing you in schools, interacting with the staff, teachers, and students, celebrating the big things like graduations, school initiatives, staff accomplishments, and the little things too. It's seeing you out, involved in the community, or on social media platforms, engaging with the people of this dream city. I asked each of you for your thoughts and the importance of being community connected. Here are just a few of the things that you shared. Authentic and real connections are what matter most. Meeting people and students where they are in life. Teamwork, removing barriers, passion for education, you're a conduit. Changing the face and trajectory of our community for the better. As a trustee, I represent the vision and values of the community, therefore, having a strong connection to the community and all stakeholders is important. Changing lives and impacting families for generations to come. Well, you have done that. The work you have dedicated yourselves to do while still devoting time to your families and careers will better the lives of generations to come. Now, when I was asked to prepare and present something for School Board Appreciation Month, I was humbled and excited. I remember even asking Lynn Nguyen, now, how much time do I have to speak? I mean, normally on a regular school day... I mean, normally on a regular school day, I've got 50 minutes, right? But I won't take that long. It didn't take me long to know that I wanted the students from the sixth-grade bilingual class to create something for this honor. They are gifted. I have watched some of these students grow as artists since kindergarten. After discussing the theme with students, with students translating and also help from our amazing FEL, Ms. Gonzalez, the students came up with hands and puzzle pieces as a way to represent community connection. As they are working, their art was what was speaking. Art does that, doesn't it? It creates a bridge that brings understanding no matter the language. The way that they could explain the meanings within their art pieces quickly became one of my wow moments. These eight students are connected to us in this school district with backgrounds from El Salvador, Cuba, Venezuela, Argentina, Italy, and Mexico. Through your efforts in support of the arts, these students will achieve amazing things across the globe with all the opportunities that are provided to them through your work as the incomparable Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District. On behalf of my family, my school, and all that you serve, thank you for all that you do. And now I have some amazing students that would like to present you with a token of thanks as well. First up is Kimberly. Kimberly loves going to specials, P-E-M Music and Art, and when she grows up, she would like to be a makeup artist. Next up is Angelis. Angelis, her goal this year, well, and to come, is to learn to speak English better and to understand English better, and when she grows up, she would like to be a doctor. Next up is Matilde. Matilde also would like to get better in English, and when she grows up, she would like to be an actress or a soccer player. Mariana. Mariana likes the opportunity to be creative in art and music, and when she grows up, she would like to be an artist. Next up is Angeline. Angeline loves learning new things in art that she can practice at home, and when she grows up, she would also like to be an artist. Next up is Milare. Milare, one of her favorite things at school is to be able to use the collaboration space to learn and talk with her friends, and when she grows up, she would like to be a psychologist. Next is Danya. Danya is appreciative of the opportunities to improve and focus on her academics and art, and when she grows up, she would like to be a race car driver. And our man of the group, Isaac. His goal is to get better in all of his subjects, and when he grows up, he would also like to be an artist. I present to you the artists of Peach Elementary, and we give you such thanks for all that you do for us.
We would love to come down. May we come down and get a better look?
Please.
Arlington ISD, Arlington Ministerial Association, Black Citizens Advisory Committee, U.S. Postal Service, Mayor and Anderson Society, and the University of Texas at Arlington, UTA. It was formed in 1989. Dr. Dom Pike, pastor of First United Methodist Church, was the committee's first chair. I'm coming off having had the opportunity to serve as the 35th chair. Under Dr. Pike's leadership, the committee created a citywide multi-day celebration based on the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to coincide with the federal MLK holiday. The first MLK celebration was held in 1990 and featured three days of events that attracted nearly a thousand participants. Successful citywide events have been held in the ensuing 35 years and expanded to four days of celebration that include an MLK gala, MLK Step Show and Talent Showcase, Poetry Meets Jazz, Ecumenical Service, Day of Service, Day of Service Festival, and the closing Youth Extravaganza Ceremony. And as we shared earlier, part of the celebration is the recognition of art essay winners as well as university-level scholarship winners. The City of Arlington, the University of Texas at Arlington, Tarrant County College, the Arlington Ministerial Association, Arlington ISD are represented on the MLK Celebration Committee along with a dedicated group of volunteers who continue to stage one of the nation's most successful celebration events. Meanwhile, contributors and supporters of the events have included financial institutions, utility companies, local newspapers, and a host of local businesses, and individuals making the four-day celebration truly a community synergizing event and long-lasting community event, making it very well-deserving of the Arlington ISD Community Powered by Possibilities Award of Appreciation. At this time, I'd like to ask Lisa Thompson, who represents the University of Texas at Arlington on the committee, but she also serves as the president of the Executive Board of the Arlington MLK Celebration Committee Incorporated. And so I'd like to introduce my friend Lisa Thompson.
And I'd like to invite my fellow board members to join me if they could. We want to thank you all so much for this honor, and in doing so, we want to thank you for being a part of our 35-year history. We could not have done this without Arlington being at the forefront of ensuring that our community has a celebration that impacts our whole community and, as you heard, the nation. The five entities that support this now include Arlington Independent School District, University of Texas Arlington, Tarrant County Community College, Arlington Ministerial Association, the City of Arlington, each year rotate to ensure that we have a successful event. And so this year was hosted by AISD and our very own Aaron Peralas. So at this time, I would like to present to him this plaque, this perpetual plaque with his... And the plaque is something that, as I said earlier, is perpetual, so we will continue to add those individuals who serve as the hosts for each event. And for you all, we'd like to present you with a t-shirt of our event this year, and you saw the gentleman who was the artist. And then we have another token of appreciation, a 35-year pin. You heard that Ms. Shirley Adams, she's been with our committee for 29 years, and she has been our treasurer and has helped us to keep this organization financially afloat. And so I would be honored if she would say a few words as our living legend award recipient.
Thank you so much. Thank you, President Fowler, all of the school board administration staff. You've been with us 35 years honoring the life and legacy of Dr. King. His ideals are about equity, inclusion, and justice. Dr. Kovacs has often said that education is the equalizer. It was an equalizer for me, an equalizer for all of us that stand here. So I thank you for providing a first-class education, all the innovation, all the creativity that you've done to bring all of our students into an opportunity for equal education so they can fulfill their God-given potential. Thank you so much.
Justin. Down to David. Thank you so much. This is wonderful. Aw, thank you. You got a pin after all. I could not think of a better opportunity to give the award than to this group. Thank you so much for all that you do in the community, all that you do with AISD for being a true partner in education with us, and we just thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And we're just so proud that we can be a part of this and to hopefully continue on in the future with a strong partnership. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
This is our Community Powered by Possibilities Award of Appreciation presented to Arlington MLK Celebration Committee for your engagement and support of the Arlington ISD, January 18, 2024. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Next, we will open our public hearing on the Texas Academic Performance Report. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. This evening, to lead us through the public hearing, we'll hear from Dr. Natalie Lopez as she brings her presentation forward. This, as you know, is an annual presentation that we provide once the Texas Academic Performance Report for the district is published every year. So, Dr. Lopez.
President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Wertz, thank you so much for your time. Presenting on the 2023 Texas Academic Performance Report, a lot of this will seem like information you've already seen, you've already discussed, but there is, you know, the delay for this particular report coming out from TEA, and so it kind of comes out late December, and this is our first opportunity to kind of just show all of the other components beyond academics. So what is the Tapper Report? So the Texas Academic Performance Report describes the educational performance of our district and then each campus within the district. That performance is disaggregated, sliced and diced down into a variety of groups, so student groups, ethnicity, socioeconomic program, and then extensive information on school, and then district staff, programs, and then student demographics. So some of the Tapper measures are district performance, district participation, district attendance, graduation, and dropout rates, district college career and military readiness, district student information, and district staff information. And so what we're going to do today is just go through the district values. We don't get down into each of our 75 campuses. However, they are publicly available. Starting with just the disclaimer about our 2023 accountability ratings, the 2023 accountability reports are not yet publicly available, and the release of those is pending judicial ruling and decisions from the 88th Legislature during the special call session. So even though we don't have A to F or accountability domain information, we are still obviously able to look through our star performance, and we had that this summer. So we'll start there, star performance and participation. So I'll orient you to this first slide, and then it's going to follow, the remaining slides will kind of follow this same format. So what we have here is four different colored bars within each of these little sections here. That dark green is the all subjects from 2023. The gray next to it is the same, all subjects from 2022. That real cerulean blue there right next to it, that third bar over, is the difference from 22 to 23. And then that kind of marigoldish yellow there is the difference from 2023 from 2019. We kind of had talked about, we'd want to see more than just one year prior. It's kind of getting used to that pre-COVID comparison so that we've become accustomed to, and so we've included that. Now, again, the Tapper gives you the approaches, the meets, and the masters for all of the different grade levels, all of the different subjects. So I'm not going to report on everything, but y'all have seen the report, and again, it is also publicly available. So just kind of hitting the approaches level for this presentation because that is considered passing. And so for our all-student group, all subjects, we were at 69%, and that is up 2% from last year, we're at 67%. So growth across when we consolidate all of our subjects together at that satisfactory passing standard. And then you can see that third line down in the table below the visual, and what you just, the good piece about that, or the good aspect about that, is you're seeing a lot of green. So that means there's been growth across the different racial/ethnic groups, that's what's in the table below. We have all African-American, Hispanic, white, American Indian, Asian, Pacific Islander, two or more races, and then moving out of the race and ethnicity into special education, ecodis, and then emergent bilingual. So there's some abbreviations there, I want to make sure y'all were aware of those. But you see predominantly green all the way across that third row, and then sprinkles of green across the fourth row showing that there's even been growth in our 23 scores when we compared to 2019 across some of those groups. That's all subjects. So now we'll break it down into specific subject groups. So again, the format's the same. So for reading, at the approaches grade level, our all-student group was at 69% for 2023, and we already knew that we had a plateau with reading across our grade levels from 2022. So that's also 69%. So, you know, didn't decrease, so maintained, stayed the same. And then we had little increases across some of the different subgroups there, and even increases from 2019. The next slide is our annual growth and then our accelerated learning scores in just reading for all of our eligible grade levels. So that's going to be fourth through English II, whichever grade level students take English II. For most, it's 10th. Now, what you'll notice about this graph that's slightly different is there's less bars and there's less rows than what I just saw. Well, that's because we don't have comparison data for the 2022 school year. Yes, they took a test, but the growth calculation changed, as y'all know. We kind of have talked about the changes in the accountability system, and so we were just reporting out on the 2023 year. This graph will look similar to this one next year when we have an actual comparison year after this first year of the A to F is underway. So 55% of our students had growth in reading, and I'm looking at the all-student, that's the very first section there. And then 23% of our accelerated learners experienced the growth that they needed to become passers because they had been, if they were accelerated learners, that means that they were identified as not passing the prior year. And so 23% of them ended up passing in this current year to get the growth score that they needed. And so that's broken down by the different groups in the same way and in the same order. I'll move into math again at the approaches grade level. And so a lot of growth in math from the 2022 year. Our all-student group coming in at 68%, and in the prior year, 2022, we were at 65%. So 3% growth in math scores from grades three all the way through Algebra I scores. And you can see, again, that third row, there's a lot of green almost every single group. And again, some of those groups where it might not be, you may have a small denominator where, so they're like kind of large fluctuations because the denominator's small. But anyhow, so majority of our groups increased from 22, and not new, but we know that we had a larger gain to make in mathematics. And so not really a surprise that our fourth row there doesn't have as much green as our reading. And then for, growth is eligible for reading and then also for math. So for mathematics, our growth and accelerated learning is shown here. So in math, 62% of our students earned their growth score, and then 38%, I'm sorry, I apologize, 36% ended up passing the test this year of those students that didn't pass last year. All right, then moving now on to science at the approaches grade level. So lots of green in that third row, that's a good sign. We have 69% of our all-student group at the approaching grade level or better, and prior year it was 67%. So 2% growth in our fifth grade, eighth grade, science, and then our biology, and so, and even some of our subgroups hitting growth from 2019. That 25% though at our Pacific Islander wouldn't put much into that because, again, that's probably based on the fact that we have a very small denominator and very few students that are in that category. So some of those, again, larger fluctuations in either direction. For social studies, at the approaches grade level, also improvement, 72% up from 70 in the prior year, and then green almost all the way across when you look at the difference from 22 to 23, with a little sprinkling of green even when we compare back to 2019 across some of those racial and student groups. Science and social studies don't have growth, so you'll just, you'll notice that they didn't have that annual growth and accelerated learning slide. Only reading and mathematics have those. So then now moving specifically into just our bilingual subset of students, again, still though maintaining at that approaches grade level and then the format being the same as what it was. For our all-grades bilingual, we were at 61%, and that's kind of maintaining what we did in 2022, so staying the same. And still need to increase to, with our bilingual subset, to get back to 2019 standards or performance. And then you can see the breakdown, that's for all of our tests, you can see the breakdown. So in math, we have 1% growth, reading, we had a 1% dip, that's kind of a wash because then science, we maintain. So that's kind of how that all, when we look at that all category on the very far left, that's why it's just kind of 0% doing exactly what we had done the prior year, pretty much, when you put them all together. For our bilingual students, they do also have annual growth or accelerated learning in reading and math. And so this slide just simply shows, when you put all the tests together, 53% of the students had growth, whether it was in reading or math, and then 31% passed that did not pass the prior year. But then you can see, if you just want to look at reading, the growth is 45%, whereas in math, the growth is 60%. So more students earning the growth goal or the growth mark in math than in reading last year. And, you know, again, some of that could be because we had a larger decrease in mathematics when we came back from COVID, and so obtaining growth because we took a larger dip might just be, it might just be more reasonable for some of our students. We have not looked into any type of evaluation of what the cause was or what the difference was between the two different subjects. Moving then into our ESL at the approaches grade level, a lot of growth across ESL. So just different than what we see at the bilingual in K through six. Our ESL, we had increases in all the subjects from 22 to 23, so 4% overall, but then even increases in our ESL scores from 2019. We're going to see the benefit of that in our RDA score coming up shortly here. Little teaser, okay. And then for our ESL, also they have annual growth and accelerated learning, and so you can see that when we lump reading and math together, our annual growth is 55%, and the students that didn't pass last year that passed this year to earn the growth score was 30%. And then again, slightly larger though, when I break it apart by subject, I can see more growth across in the math subject than in reading. Moving out of performance and into participation, you have to have 95% of your students participate in state assessments in order to not receive some fault of the concept of false failure. It's not that concept anymore, but it's very similar, and so we didn't have a problem with that. State tested 99% of its students in Arlington. We also were able to test 99% of our students, so we matched the state with respect to participation. Moving now into that third component of the Tapper measures, attendance, graduation, dropout, and then consolidated CCMR with this. So our attendance rates, these are important to note, these are not from last school year. So the star performance was from 22, 23, but attendance is a year behind in the same way that graduation and dropout is also a year behind. So what you're going to see, that first bar in each section, you know, that kind of dark green, that's actually the attendance from the 2022 school year, and then the gray bars are 2021 school year. 2021's a little hard to compare to, obviously 2020, but then even 2021 because we had that, we had some virtual learning options that might have impacted the validity of some of the attendance data. And I'm not here, just across the state, it was very, you know, maybe you just turned on your screen if you were a virtual learner, and then that was counted as being present. So there was a lot of variability in the way that that was recorded. So the fact that we have decreases from 21 to 22 in attendance, that's not really that shocking because by 2022, it was literally in the seat in order to be counted for attendance. So you'll just see some of the drops across that, and not really shocking to us. For your graduation rate, again, this is that graduating class of 2022 comparing them to the graduating class of 2021. And similarly to attendance, we have decreases in the graduation rates for that 2022 class, kind of returning to normal graduation requirements, not giving as much grace, I believe was the term that TEA had used in 2020 and then kind of even into 2021. So we do have some, about 2% decreases across the board from 21 to 22. Our four-year dropout rate, it makes sense that that would be, you know, the inverse of our graduation rate, so we do have an increase in dropout rate, and that is not shocking. We had a decrease in the graduation rate from 21 to the 22 class. We also report out five-year graduation rate, so this is going back to our 2020 class to our 2021 class. So even larger differences from the 2020 class to the 2021 because of, mostly I would think because of requirements. So, and then our dropout rate was slightly larger in 21 than it was in the year 2020. CCMR graduates, so our 2022 class, for our graduates with earning a point, all-student, I'm looking at that first section in the table, is at 67.6% for our 2022 graduates, and that was up 22% from 2021, which was 45.6%. So even with the changes in CCMR year after year, we did have growth from 21 to 22. And yes, more opportunities for SAT and ACT because they didn't have to shut down those statewide and nationwide tests like they had in 2020. However, there was also a district effort to increase CCMR that resulted in the 22% gain, and I'm very much looking forward to this time next year to report out the 23 difference from 22 because I know Dr. McDonald and Dr. Darchow have worked very, very hard along with Dr. Horton and Zesky on getting CCMR, and not just the point, but getting students college and career ready, and that's been a goal of theirs. And so this is definitely showing, you know, the fruit of that labor. This is new, as far as reporting for Tapper is district discipline data, and so what's been provided is actually what we submit through PMS to the state. And so we are required now to report on violent or criminal incidents. So if you have been on, like most of y'all have been on the board, you've seen this presentation many years now. So this might have been like, hey, what's going on? Why am I seeing this? I've never seen this before. It's a new requirement. So anyhow, that's in there, just go, there's been, there were 12,812 total incidents, and then you can see from this visual the rate and the count of the category of just the violent or criminal incidents. So for example, fighting was 6% of the discipline incidents from the 22, 23 school year, and that accounts, or that was 765 of the incidents of the 12,812. So, and then, I mean, obviously, fighting kind of, it's very much skewed, fighting was the biggest issue as far as violent or criminal incidents than the second being, you know, it's followed up by that controlled substance or drugs. 2.7% of our incidents were in that category with a count of 343 of those. Then the third felony-controlled substance, only 2% of our incidents, disciplinary incidents. And then you can kind of, you know, see that the rest of the, you know, assault on non-district employee, then terroristic threat felony, and then, so it kind of just, you see that there's very few incidents in some of those more, I mean, maybe what one might consider more severe, you know, the felony aspects, so. Some of the efforts that are made within the district for prevention and an intervention for school violence or for criminal behavior, we have some, obviously, board policy, FFB Local Student Welfare Crisis Intervention, so determining, establishing a threat assessment team, what their duties are, ensuring that a campus all has identified members of their team to be on, not just a district, obviously, but each campus with their threat assessment team, and then the policies and duties. The other board policies, FFH Local Student Welfare related to freedom from discrimination, harassment, and retaliation, so outlining, you know, defining dating violence and the policies related to how to handle that, sexual harassment, definitions there, ways to handle that, what are the policies, what are the procedures, what are consequences, what are hearings, and all of that is outlined in our policy, board policy. And then FFI Local Student Welfare, Freedom from Bullying, definitions of bullying, and also cyberbullying, and then the applicability of that. So when, if something happens on maybe a social media, when are you allowed to address that as an educator since it maybe didn't happen at school? Also, establishment of the Multidisciplinary Threat Assessment Team, and Dr. Niketchi Madueki, and she is the, I'm sorry, coordinator of that Multidisciplinary Threat Assessment Team for the district, and she works in collaboration with Sheba Smith, and she's from Arlington Police Department. They handle the district policies and reporting. There's Crime Stoppers as far as reporting concerns, a Stop It reporting app, that's also another mechanism which we have available for students to use. And then in the Student Code of Conduct, kind of clear expectations for student behavior so that we don't have school violence and criminal behavior. So while I can't speak granularly, if there are questions related to that, Dr. Hill absolutely can give you more of the specifics. The second piece that's new, that we haven't reported on before, but that's new to this presentation, is What are the procedures? What are consequences? How does, what are, what are hearings? And all of that is outlined in our, in our policy, board policy. And then FFI local student welfare, freedom from bullying, definitions of bullying and also cyberbullying. And then the applicability of that. So when, if something happens on a, maybe a social media, when are you allowed to address that as an educator? Since it maybe didn't happen at school. Also establishment of the multidisciplinary threat assessment team. And Dr. Niketchi Madueki, and she is the, I'm sorry, coordinator of that multidisciplinary threat assessment team for the district. And she works in collaboration with Sheba Smith, and she's from Arlington Police Department. They handle the, the district policies and reporting. There's crime stoppers as far as reporting concerns, a Stop It reporting app. That's also another mechanism which we have available for students to use. And then in the student code of conduct, kind of clear expectations for student behavior so that we don't have school violence and criminal behavior. So I, while I can't speak granularly, if there are questions related to that, Dr. Hill absolutely can give you more of the, the specifics. The second piece that's new, that we haven't reported on before, but that, that's new to this presentation is our AISD graduate performance in Texas higher educational institutions. So when we look at the enrollment of our Arlington ISD students, once they leave us in, in exclusively Texas higher education institutions, those are the numbers that you're seeing here. So in this table, very first column is Arlington High School. So there were six hundred and eighty-nine total high school graduates. Of those six eighty-nine, a hundred and twenty-six went to a four-year public university in the state of Texas. A hundred and forty-one went, attended a two-year public university in the state of Texas. Eleven went to an independent college or, or university in the state of Texas. Seventy-one were not trackable, three hundred and forty were not found. That, that not found is, they might've gone in anywhere in any other state. And so we may have a higher amount attending higher ed outside of Texas. But we only are getting, we get our data from the Texas Higher Educating Coordinating Board. So we're limited to universities within this state. But so you can follow the graph, you can see the same Houston values, Lamar High School, Bowie, Martin, Segin and Arlington Collegiate. And then they'll have, we'll have another column with Arlington College and Career when we do a Tupper next year. So not only do we have the enrollment in the Texas higher ed institutions, but we also have their GPA data available to us. And so what this table shows is kind of different categories. So the N-count and the percentage of the students and their GPA falling within the different categories. So kind of take you back to this, we had a hundred and forty-one students go to a two-year public college from Arlington High School of the six hundred and eighty-nine. So that one hundred and forty-one, you can see that number at the far end on this first row on this table because this is the two-year public college GPA table. So those hundred and forty-one kids, seventy-two of them had a GPA lower than two point oh. Nine had a GPA in between two and two point four nine. Twelve had a GPA in between two point five and two point nine nine. Sixteen had a GPA in between three and three point four nine. Twenty-seven had a GPA higher than three point five. And then five did not have a GPA that was reported. So this kind of gives you just information about enrollment and success as, as measured by GPA in that, in that two-year public ed institution. That same data is available for the students attending a four-year public university. So since we're using Arlington High School as our example here, so Arlington High School had a hundred and twenty-six students from this table attend a four-year public university in Texas. And that hundred and twenty-six, you can see is at the end of our first row. So those hundred and twenty-six, you can then see their GPAs and how they fell into those different bands. An observation and solely an observation is just that there's more of an equal distribution across the different bands for our four-year students than our two-year students. So kind of notice that the, the bulk of the students attending two-year, a large chunk of them, majority or getting close to a majority, are in that under two, two point oh GPA category. Whereas when you look at our four-year students, there's more of equal distribution within those different bands. We have not done any analysis on that, just simply an observation. Now moving into a results-driven accountability, this is something that's put on the front page of, of our, our Tapper for the district. And DEA is currently working on consolidating A to F and RDA. But that's going to happen like five years out. It, RDA is report only for, for the twenty-twenty-three year through twenty-twenty-seven. And then they have a plan to implement, and again, consolidate those two systems because they're both accountability systems and they have a lot of duplication, a little redundancy there. So anyhow, so results-driven accountability, I think, does a little bit, it's a little bit broader than A to F and doesn't kind of just exclusively look at STAR. Not that A to F does that because they do also look at Tellpass. But RDA looks at discipline, well, graduation and dropout, which, I mean, so does A to F. Some other categories, the program rate, sped percentage rates, year after exit, performance on STAR. So just maybe a little bit more diverse of the things that they kind of rank the district on. And so there are three different areas. So there's bilingual, there's special pops, and then there's special education. We focused RDA this slide last year on special education because that was where we had determined we needed to put a lot of effort into improve outcomes, performance levels in order to therefore in, increase our determination level. Increase it by decreasing it because actually a lower level is a higher score. So that's like determination level for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year was a level two, which is better than what we did last year. We were at level three, so it's an increase and it's an improvement by decreasing a level. So that's fantastic. There was a, just to kind of orient you to this visual because it's a little crazy. There's a lot of information going on, but I, I love this slide. So you can see that first indicator section on this visual shows you math, reading, science and social studies. Okay, but for what? Well, if you go over to the, the table, the little legend over there, indicator one is sped STAR three through eight passing rate. So what you see is for math, our sped students increased by going from a three to a two. So that's good, you want to go up a level. They, they increased in math. It's kind of a wash though, because they did drop a level in reading and then maintained at science and social studies. Then you move over to the next indicator, three, year after exit STAR three through eight passing rates. And what you see is in math and science, we increased, we improved in our performance. So we went from a one to a zero, and that's a good thing. You always want to go to a lower level, but we show it visually that the Y-axis is flipped. The area that I think was just fantastic was our sped STAR EOC passing rate. So what you see is those, those long green arrows showing that we went from a three to a zero. So increasing three levels. So our, our, our EOC passing rates for our special ed students, the kiddos at our high schools, the teachers, the effort there really does, I mean, we, we saw that with the STAR performance. We've kind of, we've continued seeing that as we've evaluated data. And so, but they, they've done a, a fantastic job and it really, it really helped in the RDA for the district. Sometimes campuses don't necessarily think about the, what they're doing for the district. It's what do, what am I doing for the kids? But in this case, you know, it just kind of see that, that ripple effect all the way up. And so, and yeah, we dropped it a bit in six and then, which is our sped graduation rate. And then we dropped in our total disciplinary removal. But overall, we increased in, in our sped performance. And so Patty Bustamante has a fantastic team. So there was absolutely efforts there from Cindy Brown and then Orsini and Delise Hardy. So they, they all worked on the, the central side to assist with the campuses. And then the work of the students and the teachers really shows. So you can see that in the determinate, determination level increase. I'll go ahead and move on into our student and staff data. So total students in membership last year, fifty-six thousand one hundred and one. Our, our ethnic distribution, we had twenty-six point eight percent African-American, forty-eight percent Hispanic, sixteen point six percent white, zero point four percent American Indian, five percent Asian, zero point two percent Pacific Islander, and then three percent two or more races. So that's, I mean, you can see that we're, we're definitely, we're not in alignment with the breakdown of the state. Once you get the African-American, Hispanic and white, we have differences there. But once you get to American Indian and below, they are, they align more with the state. Our ECO DIS rate is higher than the state, we're at seventy-five point three percent, whereas the state's at sixty-two point one. And our ECO DIS has continued to increase, you know, just year after year. We see a, not, not a sharp increase, but kind of, you know, one percent here and there. Emergent bilingual, we're at thirty point nine percent and the state was at twenty-three point one. We've had a five percent increase across ten years there approximately, and the state has had the same. So kind of the same growth in, in emergent bilingual as the state. We just have always, always had more than the state. And then our at-risk is at sixty-four point eight percent, whereas the state's at fifty-three point three. And that, that's been pretty consistent for a decade there, so. And then this next slide just shows a visual representation of that student ethnic distribution. Kind of see that, you know, Hispanic forty-eight percent were taking about, about half of the pie, so. All right then, moving into staff data, our total staff, we have seven thousand nine hundred and nine point two people that work for AISD. I, I like that we report this not as a whole number. It just, I don't know, I find it comical, I apologize. And forty-eight point eight percent of our, of our staff are teachers, thirteen point nine percent are professional staff, two point three percent are campus administrators, zero point four percent are central administrators, eleven point five percent educational aides, and then twenty-three percent auxiliary staff. I think what I like about this is that we have more professional support and, and educational aid than the state. And not statistically significantly different percentages, but just larger percentage than the state. And then less campus and central administrators than, than the state percentages. So kind of, I don't know, more of a focus on the kids, but it feels like that. Students per teacher, our, our ratio is fourteen point five, the state's is fourteen point eight. So kind of very similar there. Average years of experience of our teachers, eleven years, and that's in line with the state. Average years of experience teaching within our district, seven point six percent. And then that's six point nine percent for the state, so just slightly above that, that's good. Our instructional staff percentage, sixty-five point six percent as compared to sixty-five point one. Moving into financial information. Total operating expenditure per student, eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars per child. That's just, just above what the state spends, eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars. Areas where we're larger is instruction, instructional-related category, instructional leadership and security. I kind of like being above on those. So some of the, I mean, areas where we're, oh, I'm sorry, student support services, we're also largely above. So areas where we're under, transportation, food service, extracurricular, general administration, plant maintenance and operations, and that data processing and community service. This is a very similar slide, it just reports out by percentage instead of by the amount. And our instructional expenditure ratio from all funds is sixty-six point one percent as compared to the state's sixty-three percent. And then the unassigned general fund balance as a percentage of the budget is twenty-seven point nine percent, which is very similar to the state's twenty-eight point one percent. If you have any questions specifically about that, I'm going to let Ms. Moss handle that. Because I, my expertise is about right here on this slide. There's links to the Tapper report, to the financial data, that new discipline data, and then that new graduate higher ed GPA data that we looked through. And I know it's, we've kind of seen a lot of this already, but obviously a question slide. Because I'm at, I'm at the end.
Do I have any trustees with questions or comments? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I, I have some, a couple, a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Some observations and thoughts. And I think the easiest way to do it is, is probably just to march through the presentation. But I, I will start on the slide that has the attendance rate. So not, not all the way back at the beginning. And I, I will just summarize like my thoughts up to this slide. I'm glad to see so much green at the bottom of the bar chart that shows that we are improving progress, especially given that we're looking at years that generally were COVID years or recovering from COVID years. It's good to see that progress be made. And now the goal is to continue to grow it and maintain it. But we could obviously be heading in a different direction and it's good to see that we're not. I will say on those slides, as, as much as we are showing improvement compared to ourselves, looking at the more granular Tapper data that we were provided, some of our growth is not in line with, with the state averages. And in some areas, the, the state averages are showing significantly more growth than, than we are. And I don't want to dwell on that too much because as our, your later slides show, we are materially different, meaningfully different than the state in many different areas, among which we are, and I significantly have more students who come from socio-economically disadvantaged backgrounds. We have significantly more students who come from at-risk backgrounds. And we have significantly more emergent bilingual students. So I think we have to be cautious in those areas where people, people might point to, well, the state average did this. Well, we're very different from the rest of the state in a lot of ways. I do think, you know, beyond, this is the Tapper report, this is the public hearing we're required to do annually. So beyond the scope of this, I think something that would be helpful is to take some of the data that we look at, when we look at the Tapper report and try to find a basket of districts that are similar to us and see how we look compared to those. And I know occasionally we, we have done that. But I think that's much more meaningful than comparing us just to the state. But I realize that is what the Tapper does.
Yes, sir.
And then I also, but I do want to highlight compared to ourselves, we are showing progress and I think in a good way. On the attendance rate slide, something that I did want to point out here is that this does, like, we're not unique in this regard with attendance. This does seem to be a nationwide trend where attendance, of course, significantly declined during COVID. But has not, I mean, it's rebounded some. I think our, our latest data is showing that we're back at closer to what, ninety-three, ninety-four percent for attendance. But that, that very few districts are going back to their historical attendance averages. Pre-COVID, and there's the speculation on that is that folks are just now more leery about sending their kids to school when they're sick or they're more leery about sending their kids to school when there's a flu outbreak or COVID boot, you know, little boomlet. And so I think that's something that's going to stick. And I just want to tie this back to our legislative agenda. We've had for a few cycles now where we, we and other districts would very much like the state to go to an enrollment-based funding mechanism instead of average daily attendance. Because I think the data is becoming clearer that, for whatever reason, I think it's pretty clear that it was something to do with COVID. Coming out of that experience, people nationwide have re-approached or rethought what it means to send their kids to school and the value they put on perfect attendance. You know, that was a really big deal for my grandfather. And, you know, we got, he tried to incentivize us to go to school every day because he went to, he had perfect attendance growing up and his, my uncle had perfect attendance kindergarten through twelfth grade. And I know people were shocked when my brother had kindergarten through twelfth grade daily attendance because he skipped a lot. But I did, I did not. I did not. And that, but that was a generational value, I, I think, but I think a consequence of that is we frequently went to school sick. And I think now we understand that that's not necessarily a good thing because it's not good for you. You're not learning much when you go to school sick, but you're getting people around you sick and then they're missing school. And it's sort of this cascading bad effect. And so I would like, this slide was a jumping off point for me to reiterate, we're not different and to tie it back to our legislative agenda because that was something that didn't make it through the legislature this year that I very much would like to revisit in the future because I think, I think it's a necessity. I think we are going to unintentionally underfund our schools just based on the way that we count how kids are here. And enrollment's much more accurate because, I mean, there's a way to verify that they're enrolled. We know they're here. The fact that some kids, you know, there might be a year where there's a bigger flu outbreak than another is, and it just seems a little bit arbitrary. I'll jump over to the, the slide on the, the district discipline data. I'm glad that this slide is in here and I realize that it's new. And I think some folks are like, well, that's some data that, you know, they, they don't want to show that type of stuff and now they're required to. But I actually like the fact that we now are required to report out on this because I think it actually shows, it cuts against some of the, the atmospherics around student discipline issues that we have been dealing with for a while now where people assume and have made accusations that our campuses are significantly more violent than they used to be. And I will say that, you know, I don't think anybody's happy with the fact that six percent of our discipline incidents last year were for fighting. We don't want to encourage, you know, we don't encourage that. We don't want to encourage, you know, we don't encourage that behavior. We want to put a stop to it. It's a detriment to the educational environment. We don't like it. But I would also say, having grown up in public schools, having had parents and grandparents who went to public schools, if, if you're going to tell me that there wasn't fighting in the past, I think you're wrong. And there's no data that we really can point to to say how significant that problem used to be. And it also was treated different. I mean, my parents, you know, my dad and his uncles, they got in trouble at school here in this district growing up. Sometimes the coaches just gave them boxing gloves. And that, and we don't, I'm not saying that that was right, but we, we treat these and consider these issues differently today than I think we did in the past. So setting aside fighting, and I also want to like put a little pin in controlled substances and drugs and felony-controlled substances because we do, I think some of that is significantly marijuana use. But also the way that we have categorized some of these is some of this is students just caught with vape pens, which isn't necessarily what you would consider to be a significant felony offense. And, but we as a state, through state law, have now essentially criminalized that behavior in a way that, that I personally think is much, depending on the student, much more disproportionate to the, the offense itself. So setting those aside. You go down from there, and this is the stuff that we typically get criticized for as assaults, terroristic threats, more serious felonies, firearms on campuses. And we went through a significant period, I want to say a year or two ago, where we were, we were getting a lot of accusations that, that staff were all over the place, being mistreated in, in, in violent incidents, incidents. And this shows that that does happen, but it shows that it happens at a rate that I think people would be surprised is so low. We had 25 assaults on district employees. Those are serious things. We want to see zero. But when we have 8,000 employees, and that's not including temporary staff who don't, you know, who may not show up on, as the 8,000, you know, 25 out of, out of 8,000, I think puts into perspective that the, the theme that some people are circulating still, that our campuses are out of control, violent places, is just not true. And I think you can, we can all point to incidents where that has happened. But to say that our schools are across the board that way is just false. And I'm glad that we report this data now because we can hold folks accountable if the data does tick up. But I think it also shows trans, that there's transparency here that disproves some of the things that have been, been said about public schools and specifically ours. If I can roll over to enrollment in Texas higher ed.
Yes, sir.
So I, I've been over here, I keep looking down, and people are wondering what I'm, probably wondering what I'm doing. But I have a calculator on my phone, and I'm trying to come up with my own data here. But I think, I think there's some really good and, and frankly, some disappointing data in these slides. You can look at STAR test data, and you can look at A through F accountability scores and the mumbo jumbo around CCMR. But I think this data is, that we have now allows us to have that look back and to how we educated students to prepare for college. And now that they're off, we get reporting back on how they're doing once they've left us. And that, I think, is really valuable. And if you look at, you know, I think these are minimum numbers, right? Because you're not counting, these don't count students who went to college out of state.
Right.
And so these are minimum numbers. And I think there's some things to be very proud of here, especially on some of the campuses where we know we have students from a very, you know, a very large number of our students come from socioeconomically disadvantaged backgrounds. I mean, you've got, for example, at, at Bowie High School, you've got a minimum of almost 43% of our kids are going on to college. And, and that's in Texas. So the number's significantly higher. I think that's something, you know, to be very proud of. On the flip side, you're looking at about 22% of our kids going to college from Sam Houston, even though the enrollment there is, is, is larger. You know, that's, and that's significantly off from the other campuses. And I, I know that's actually not a new problem, you know, having grown up and gone there myself. But that, that's a persistent problem that I think is something that we can focus on going forward is what can we do knowing we have significant enough challenges there to get that college enrollment up at Sam Houston? And then another highlight on the, you know, sort of the, right, the Oreo sandwich of criticism, right? So I started with something good, that was not good, and then let's finish with something that is good. Arlington Collegiate, almost two-thirds of the kids are going on to college. And that, we know that the students there are targeted to be first-generation college students. And that means that the student, you know, that that program is succeeding. And we already know that 90% of those kids are getting their associates before they, they leave the building. And that's something to highlight. I do want to go now to the GPA slide for four-year public universities. I think this is, this is more of a mixed bag, but I think does still speak well to how we're preparing kids for school. Because at, at many of our campuses, close to half or more than half of the students are making a B average or higher.
Yep.
And I think that's something to highlight. I would again come back to, you know, by my calculation, almost two-thirds of the students from Sam Houston are struggling based on their GPA. And, and that is, you know, that's not a, that's not where we want our students to be. But on the flip side, you know, only 35% of the kids from Bowie, which I think is a school that if you looked at, at demographic data, you would expect to see maybe something closer to how Sam Houston is achieving there. And it's not. And I know that, and I don't know if we can, you know, totally attribute this to this, but we know that we have a very significant and strong Avid program at Bowie that's a national demonstration school. And so they're not far off in academic performance from Martin High School by this, by this chart. And I think that's, that speaks well of, we are doing some things very well at Bowie and some other, other campuses. I will jump over now. You, you pointed out on the staff data slide, you did point out, because I do this, I, I have a habit of doing this every time these types of slides come up, to again point out some of the stereotypes that I think folks have in their head about how we operate and how we actually operate. And you called out a lot of the things that I was going to say already to say that we're, we're lower than the state average in some areas or spend more than the state average in some areas we'd like to spend more in. But I particularly want to point out, as much as we get the criticism of our central administration is just bloated and it's, you know, out of control, I do think there's some room, right, for improvement. We've had some sustained growth in central administration over the last decade, and maybe it's time to go back and review some of that growth. But even that being said, our central admission, administration spending is a third of the state average. And I, I really, you know, that, that's something I think folks should keep in mind when hearing talking points that sometimes I don't think are necessarily based in how we actually operate. Beyond that, that's, that's really, I had more to highlight on our operating expenditures, but you hit all of them. And I, we continue, we have historically spent more on instruction and campus-level leadership and student support services than the state average, significantly so. And we continue to do that, and that's a great thing. It shows where our priorities are. And commend the district for putting this data together, making this, this presentation and sharing the data in a very transparent and easily understood way. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. First, I'd like to ask, since we are in a public forum, just to make sure there's no one waiting to speak from the public in the public hearing. Can you ask Ms. Forsberg if there are?
There is not.
There is not, no one? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lopez. And thank you, Mr. Chapa. You hit a lot of the highlights I was planning to talk on, but it's, if we can, well, on this, since we're on this slide, I will say kudos to the previous boards who have set the tone in terms of making a board goal that we put as much money as possible into the classroom in supporting our students and less in administration and that other areas that aren't directly affecting student outcomes. So, and that's something, you know, we're, we're about to lose one of our longtime board members who was part of that group that kind of set that tone. And I think I speak for the rest of my colleagues that we want to continue that forward because that's being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. And again, yet, you know, seeing 0.4% as Mr. Chapa pointed out, I don't know how many districts are able to achieve that level of efficiency in terms of putting the dollars where, where they matter. So going back to the collegiate slides that are new, I'm glad we're getting this data from the state now. I do want a couple of clarifications. If you, the independent in colleges and universities, that's not just private schools. Or is that private schools in Texas? Or do you know what makes up that category?
I, I don't want to state because I actually, I can provide the definitions that are published by TH ECD, if that would be helpful.
So yeah, I am curious of like a TCU or an SMU.
I believe that's what is in that category, but yeah, I don't.
I know there were quite a number of students from Sam Houston who did go to TCU, so.
Oh, yes.
Thanks to the scholarship, so they probably make up the bulk of that 13, those 13 students there. But if you advance to the next slide, well, this slide and the next slide, I think, you know, we talk about goals in terms of student outcomes, and there's more to life than just the star, as Mr. Chapa pointed out. And I would be, I'd love it if we as bo, as a board, set board goals for the superintendent now based on this data because I think it's very important. Now, everyone's going to go off to college, we know that. But if we can open even more opportunities for students who wish to go to college and see those numbers increase, I think it, that's something I would like to see to set the tone at the top strategically and in terms of KPIs that we track going forward. If you go to, good, I'm glad you're on this slide. So I think a lot of people pointed out a lot of disappointment in the two-year public college GPAs. There seems to be a lot of failure rate for people who go to two-year institutions. That is national, that is a national trend. I don't know, you know, there's been a lot of root cause. My daughter actually was in part of a student success group at TCC where she was part of a group of students to help change that statistic. And I think they're doing amazing things at TCC to take the kids from that less than 2.0 GPA and dropping out eventually to actually graduating and, and getting a passing grade. So some, some two-year universities are doing a great job. But I just want to caution us, that is no different than what you see across the country. So we are fortunate in this area in that TCC is one of the innovators in that area. And that's available through our partnerships with Early College High School. So the other thing, you mentioned that. And then our, our attendance rate that Mr. Chapa mentioned earlier, there are a lot of root causes of why attendance is down across the country. And in some pockets of the country, very severe, they're still way below their pre-COVID attendance rates. And there's a number of root causes. And we, I've got to say, we are close to where we were.
Yeah.
And much different than what pockets like the Pacific Northwest and the Northeast and other areas of the country are experiencing. So, but you don't have the state averages on this one, do you?
For the state, it was 92.2%. And we were 91.1%.
So close.
For the region, it was 92.7.
Yeah. So, a little more than a point off. But in some parts of the country, they're still in the 80s. So we're, we're, you know, I think we have more work to do. We get, we get funding based on attendance, so it's very important that we increase that because we know we want to overcome the loss that occurred during COVID and get students back on track academically. That's going to require butts in seats. And there's no way around that. And if they're not in class learning, then we're not optimizing our chance of getting them back on track. So, so yeah, I wanted to have that caveat, but it's still important that we're working, doing everything we can to continue to increase the attendance rate. And then outside of that, that's, oh, if you go to the RDA.
Yes, sir.
So I think it's clear for everyone to know that if you're between a zero, if you're at a zero to one, you're in the top 80%.
For determination level, yes.
Yeah, for determination, it's a forced distribution.
Yes, sir.
So one would be you're at the 80% of all schools in Texas.
Could be, yes, you're, yeah.
And then a two would be the bottom 20%.
95.
To the five, to the bottom 5%. And then a three is the bottom 5% of the state.
Yes, sir.
And then a four is the bottom 1%. So there's roughly 1,300 school districts in the state of Texas. So if you're at a one, you're one of 13 school districts in the state of Texas.
If you're a four.
A four, sorry.
I know, it's backwards.
It's backwards, and see, it's, it's very confusing.
Yes.
So I, I just want to make sure everyone's clear that it's a forced distribution, so we better be zero to one.
Well, and.
Or one, overall distinction.
Crucial point, because somebody's going to be a four because it's relative. Yes, yes.
Yeah. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. McMurra?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Dr. Lopez. And this was, this was really comprehensive. And even though it looks like a lot of information, it was very cumulative and informative. And I, while you have it on this slide, I only have two, two things I wanted to address. And students receiving special education was one of them. We see that, we see the growth in the passing rate, as you're talking about. But I noticed that our graduation rate for students receiving special education services is only 75%. And I, I do understand if we don't have the exact answers right now, but I wanted to see if you guys could, if you or Dr. Wirths or anyone on hand could shed some light on, on that, I guess, disconnection because I'm curious why we're not seeing improvement with graduation rates there. And if, if, if we need to get more information at a later time, that's fine. But it's something that I just noticed, there's, there's a disparity there, you know?
So I would, we would have to pull the specific data around these specific students to try to understand that. I would say, though, that special education graduation, graduation rates are a little more complex than the traditional student because many of them are, are driven. And we also have students that continue past regular age. And then an art has to determine whether they're going to graduate them and keep them in the program or not. So we would have to dig into this to see. I think the point around this to also keep in mind is, your point is around a very specific number, like a 75% graduation rate. This is also comparing us to other districts across the, the state. So while our performance has dropped down, it's still better than many other districts. What's reducing our rate compared to the general population? We'd have to dig into the actual student data to figure out whether there are decisions or not.
Thank you. And I mean, the reason why I ask and the reason why I do want to dig deeper as a trustee is because we do believe that all students can learn. And the graduation rate is what we're after. And I'm just, I'm really hopeful that every effort is being made in the arts and in, in students' accommodations and plans that we are paving the pathway for our students to graduate. The only other thing I was going, and it's not really a question, it's just kind of a connection I'm making. Trustee Chapa was talking about our discipline data. And what's reported for our Tapper report is, like you mentioned, a slice of the pie, right? And here, these are the types of violent or criminal incidents that are reported. And I agree with the statements made by trustee Chapa. I just wanted to reiterate something that we talked about when we saw our most recent employee engagement survey results. We can mitigate these types of incidents if we do have systems in place to support our educators in general classroom management and just, you know, tightly-held procedures to avoid escalation for, you know, more severe discipline issues. So I do hope, in addition to the next slide that you had, yes, I do hope in addition to these efforts, we're also, you know, prioritizing just as much what we're doing preventatively and to support our campus-based staff to help have the tools and training to even keep it from getting to that level. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurra. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. And Dr. Lopez, thank you for the information, as always. I won't reiterate the points that were made by my colleagues. I appreciate them all, agree with just about every single thing that was said. And some of these things are.
And uh some of these things are uh repeat situations year after year with what the reputation is versus what the data shows. And when I first got on this board, I was the first board member to talk about data-driven decisions. I'm a healthcare guy, that's what we use, that's what I learned from a mentor of mine, and it's strictly going by the data, numbers don't lie. How you uh put those numbers out there could be subject to interpretation, right? But uh this particular report, it's just point blank, uh it's very simple, it's hard to massage the data, so to speak. So I, I just wanted to add, and I think it's already been inferred here uh to Mr. Will Banks' comments about superintendent of board goals, district goals, specifically with the discipline and the two and four-year college uh uh rates and GPAs that uh may, just to make sure, I know that that analysis is going to happen uh compared to other, you know, compared to the state data, but also to look at comps, uh districts that are like us, uh to really look at how we compare, but then also for our own internal goals as far as trend analysis, if we're hitting the marks or not. So um I know we have other discipline data that's not reflected in this uh report, that uh it's variable in different years, but I think overall, it's been a net uh positive. But this is, this is something that is supplied now by every district in the state, and so it's a, it's a good solid uh comparator uh for data. So uh that was all I wanted to put out there, just to make sure, since I'm not going to be here for a long time.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Thank you, Dr. Lopez. I'm not sure if this question would be for you or maybe for Dr. Wertz. I'm looking at the four-year dropout rate slide.
Yes.
And it's heartbreaking to me to think that students will go nine, ten, or eleven years and then they disappear, they drop out. So I have two questions. One is, what are we doing to ensure that students stay in school? And if they disappear, what are we doing to try and get those students to come back? I know every year, we're all a part of Project Graduation where we go out and, and we try to reach out to the students that aren't coming back to school, but as a district, I'm just curious to know what we're doing to try and keep those students in class? And those that disappear, what are we doing to try to get them, to bring them back?
So we have a, we have people on staff that actually work with the high schools to help locate students. The other thing to think, to keep in mind about this specific number is, this is also connected to what we call lever codes. So a lot, if a student, for example, leaves Texas and goes to another state and we can't find them and they're enrolled in school, they're considered a dropout on our end. So the number in some cases is inflated, like it doesn't necessarily mean that you have eleven percent of your students who never graduate, they may be eleven percent of students that leave that we can't all, always find. A subsection of that group of students are the students you're talking about that we actually know are in our system, we know where they live, uh we know how many credits behind they are, and we have a team that works with um campuses to help identify those kids and find the easiest pathway to graduation for them. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. That was really my only question. Thank you for all the information, Dr. Lopez. I know this was a lot, but it's very useful and things that we need to be aware of. So thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and Ms. Forsberg, do, do I understand correctly that we do not have any speakers for the public hearing?
We have no registered speakers for the public hearing.
Thank you. We now come to our open forum for agenda items. Do we have any registered speakers, Ms. Forsberg, for agenda items?
No, but Madam President, you actually, you have to close the hearing.
The open, thank you. All right, seeing that there are no speakers, we now close the public hearing. Thank you. And the open forum.
Ma'am, I would need to interrupt, there are three of us signed up to speak.
Are you registered for the non-agenda items? Yes, we'll, we'll get to you in just a moment. Thank you. No, no, thank you. Next on the agenda item, we have to consider the order of election. Do I have a motion to uh call for the election on May fourth, twenty twenty-four? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to move that the board call a general election to be held on Saturday, May fourth, twenty twenty-four, for the purpose of electing members to the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District to fill place numbers one, two, and three.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I have a motion for Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second? Do I have a second for Ms. Richardson? Please vote. Motion carries, thank you. We now come to address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the con- consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda? Thank you, Ms. McMorrow, is there a second? Second for Ms. Haynes. Please vote. Motion carries, thank you. Not, not this one? All right. A general election is hereby ordered to be held on Saturday, May fourth, twenty twenty-four, for the purpose of electing members to the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District to fill places numbers one, two, and three. The main early voting polling site for all voters residing in the Arlington Independent School District, including the portion of the district that lies within the city of Arlington, the city of Dow Worthington Gardens, the Tarrant County portion of the city of Grand Prairie, and the town of Pantigo, will be the following location. Tarrant County Election Center, twenty-seven hundred Premier Street, Fort Worth, Texas, seven six one one one, between the hours of eight AM and five PM, Monday through Friday, beginning April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, through April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, between the hours of seven AM and seven PM on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, between the hours of ten AM and four PM on Sunday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and between the hours of seven AM and seven PM on Monday and Tuesday, April twenty-ninth and April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Applications for a ballot by mail for voters residing in the Arlington Independent School District shall be mailed or faxed to early voting clerk, P O Box ninety-six one zero one one, Fort Worth, Texas, seven six one six one oh oh one one, or an email transmission of a completed scanned application for a ballot by mail containing an original signature can be mailed to votebymail@terrentcountytech.gov. Effective December first, twenty seventeen, if an application for ballot by mail is submitted by fax or email, the original application must also be mailed and received by the early voting clerk no later than the fourth business day after receipt of the faxed or emailed copy. Applications for a ballot by mail must be received no later than the close of business on Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. The order of election may be amended at a later date to include early voting sites added or deleted due to join elections with other political subdivisions issued this eighteenth day of January, twenty twenty-four. We now move to discussion item, Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, President Fowler. This evening, uh Dr. Christy Buehl, our interim uh chief academic officer, is here with us tonight to share an update on the district strategic plan powered by possibilities. This is a plan that's five years, as you know, and we are actually in the process of adopting all the work for year three, and she's going to be sharing information about the last year that we just finished. Dr. Buehl.
All right, thank you. Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Wertz. I am here tonight to talk about the strategic plan update and provide you some updates on the good work that we're doing across the district. The purpose of a strategic plan is to define the strategies and the results and the actions that we're going to take as a district in order to achieve our goals. It outlines that district-wide map and provides a clear direction for all of the stakeholders in the district. The process encompasses strategic thinking, backward design, informed planning, lots and lots of thought about what the most important work that we do in our district to move outcomes for students, and it aligns the roles, resources, and systems that we have in place to achieve those goals. Embedded in our strategic plan is the mission, the beliefs, the call to action that you're all very familiar with, and the ultimate goal of ensuring that a hundred percent of our students will graduate exceptionally prepared for college, career, and citizenship. It brings all of those actions into alignment with that goal. Also embedded into all of our strategies is our learner profile, and that's what we want for all of our students in Arlington, to communicate effectively, to collaborate, to think critically, to solve problems, to self-regulate, to model responsible citizenship, much of which I'll have talked about tonight. It is more than stars, about the outcomes for our learners, and this is embedded into each of the strategies that we have in place. There were four primary areas that our strategies were built around, and these were our focus areas. One was prioritizing high-quality learning experience for all of our students to mitigate against the unfinished learning. We'll go through the, the timing of this five-year plan as we move forward, but it hit at a very critical time, we were coming off of COVID, and how did we address the unprecedented challenges that our students, our staff, and all of our stakeholders were addressing at the time? Another is that we will strategically align the initiatives to increase student achievement. We'll prioritize the social and emotional well-being for our students and our teachers and our staff. Again, critically important, especially given the timing of this plan. And that we guarantee every Arlington ISD student, staff, and parent has equitable access to all of the Arlington ISD programs and resources regardless. We want all students to have knowledge of and access to. So looking at our implementation uh timeline, this is a five-year plan, as Dr. Wertz spoke to. We launched this back in two thousand and twenty-two, that was our, our year one, which you're all very familiar with. Year two is what we're just finishing up and is really the intent of tonight's um presentation, to talk about the strategies that we've implemented over the last year, give you an update on where we are. We always hope that we're going to, we're going to finalize those at the end of the two years, but we also know that with the continuous improvement process, it's about taking a look at the strategy, the implementation, the impact. Okay, what are our next steps? What do we need to continue to do? And then we're about to launch, in fact, we had our first meeting this week on that, launching to our year-three strategies as well. So I have a green arrow there showing we're right between year two and year three with this presentation. So just real quick, because I know everyone's familiar with this, our year-one strategies back from the twenty uh twenty-one, twenty-two school year, uh we have those listed um there. And this presentation tonight will really uh focus more on the deliverables that we had and the impact across the system, system for our year-two strategies. And we're going to talk about those specific results this evening. So the first strategy is around strategy two, it's district communication, to create a system that streamlines communication, fosters clarity, and a shared uh commitment to the district priorities, and it also celebrates our successes. Uh our communication team and lots of other stakeholders have been busy at work with that, conducting regular district updates so that the staff can hear directly from our superintendent, and they have a chance to have questions answered, also hear good news around the district um through that. They also, the communication team, has bi-weekly communication to all parents across the district to talk about what's going on in the district, the most important news and information, and also provide that feedback, feedback loop to our superintendent. And to utilize a crisis communication uh response framework, um and this has been super important. I know I get, I get updates frequently on this, and I really appreciate it. They're for every lockdown we have or shelter in place in order to streamline that communication and reduce the fear and the anxiety that can be created, the confusion when people aren't informed. So our communication team stays right on top of that to keep all of the stakeholders informed in a, in the event of an emergency. And then daily communication across multiple platforms. We have over two hundred and fifty followers, and so they're very active with that because we know that's a way that many of our stakeholders or even people looking to come to the Arlington area find out information on our district. They've also developed a comprehensive marketing booklet, which I'm sure y'all are familiar with, that provides information about um all of the major programs that we have across the district for our internal stakeholders, but also for um when we're talking to businesses or people that may be relocating to the area. We want to have a concise way of communicating all of the innovative programming that we have in Arlington. They've also created a graphic uh suite that's used in all of our paid advertising, and they do a great job with that. I've seen some of the bulletin boards and things like that that, that they've done. Designed daily um custom graphics that go out on our social media channels, if you follow those, um you're familiar with those. They led a very successful pre-K marketing campaign that we talked about uh back in September, October, and we're really proud of the recruiting that we've been able to do and the number of students that we're serving, because we know, as we showed in the data in that presentation, attending pre-K has a significant impact on students' performance as a kindergartner. They've helped develop new school logos, mascot marks, and department logos, so we can have consistent branding across the district, and they provide graphic design and layout for the Arlington Today that goes out on a monthly basis. So, phew, our communication team is hard at work. Strategy three, to create a district calendar that prioritizes time to promote social and emotion well-being of all of our stakeholders. We gave an update on the, on the calendar um in December, and I know y'all voted that into place, and that was a big part of this strategy. There were twenty-nine um stakeholders that were involved in that calendar committee. They met over the course of the fall semester, um and the purpose of the committee was to build an academic-focused calendar that emphasized student outcomes, but also elevated the social and emotional well-being of all of our stakeholders. And a couple of things that the calendar committee was able to do to meet that goal, to name a few, the midweek start at the beginning of the year was something that our teachers really appreciated. We got a lot of great feedback this year. As a teacher in the classroom, it gives you an opportunity to meet and greet your kids for a couple of days, help them get set with the routine and procedures, then you have a weekend and you come back Monday and you start strong with your class. So we were glad that we were able to carry that over to the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We also strategically placed teacher planning days to allow for those extended breaks, that time to just take a breath, re-energize, and come back ready to hit that, that ground strong. One example of the way that they did this um for next year in the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar was to reduce um the professional learning time that, we call it exchange time, that our teachers get from twenty-four hours to eighteen hours. And so when they come back in the spring semester, the first day back, they will have a teacher work day, the second day, they will have a professional learning day, the students will come back on the third day. So that will give teachers a chance to kind of reset for that second semester and be there strong for our kids when they show up on the third day. So that's just another example. And then, of course, um continuing with the early release days for elementary schools. Our teachers um really appreciate that, and um I know that it's been really well-received, and it gives them that opportunity throughout the year to just really focus on their planning, how they're serving their students, to regroup um during the year. So that uh calendar was approved on December seventh, so thanks to all of you, and helped us to, to really achieve that goal. Oh, can I have some? My screen's frozen. Let me see. There we go, I think I can do it this way. I'm sorry, I apologize for that. It's the one time I didn't bring my paper up. So the next one is um the elementary schedule. The elementary schedule was revamped this year in order to protect teacher planning time. When we got feedback from teachers, that was really important, and we know that for teachers to have the best first instruction and quality instruction to meet the needs of our learners, they have to have an opportunity to plan quality instruction. they have to have an opportunity to plan quality instruction. And so we really um put forth a lot of effort to make sure that that time is protected, and we're continuing to monitor that. Um, and we know that that makes a difference. Um, also embedding PLCs into the elementary schedule that are outside of the planning time. Previously, we've had those, but they've been built into the master schedule. And this year, we were able to pull them out of the planning period and give them a separate PLC time. And so we have those at each of our elementary campuses. Our guidance counselors are also pushing in to deliver lessons on social-emotional learning with our students. Part of that is built into the master schedule, and it's a way that we created the PLC time for them. Um, they're using standardized SEL lessons that they've developed that are aligned to the scope and sequence. Um, and so they'll deliver those at each of the grade levels. We also see social-emotional learning strategies being embedded into our PBIS training, um which is the proactive side that Trustee McGurk was was speaking to. How are we promoting that? So we've been very intentional with that this year. Some of the ways, just the the small outcomes that you see when you're out visiting campuses, that they're really addressing uh social-emotional learning in an authentic way. Um, the meditation minute. I know we were out at Little, and they stop every morning and do their meditation minute there. Circle time that teachers do to build community within the classroom with kids. The good things that teachers share out as they start lessons, they start their day with kids. The student check-in very often in classes as you're walking down when kids come. They'll be lined up in the hallway, and they'll high-five their teacher, greet him with a fist bump. And they'll have different ways. It's a way for a teacher to check in on the students and make sure that they're ready to come and learn, because that's not always the case for every student. And our teachers know, and they can recognize that. They can intervene, get them off on the right foot, and then they're gonna have a much better day. So we see a lot of intentionality behind that. And then the house system to build community. I know I was on at Bull's, I was on Team Yellow when I was over there. But they have house systems. They're different at every school. But the gist of it is that they're building community within the school and helping students just elevate what's right and how they fit into the culture of that campus. So a lot of fun. Then one of the next strategies is strategy four, and it's about expanding learner access to the specialized programmings and career pathways that we have across the district. I think this is something that I am super proud of in Arlington because we do have a lot of innovative options and choices for our students. And so pausing to make sure that we're very intentional about making sure all of the students understand them, they see themselves fitting into it, and they understand how it aligns with their own unique interests and talents is really important because that's gonna engage them throughout their high school. So one of the strategies, four point one point one, is launch two new PTEC programs at Sam Houston and Seguin. And I'm excited to say I've been to both of them. It looks super fun. I wish I could have participated in a program like that um in high school. But here's kind of an overview of the four PTEC programs that we have. Previously, we had one at Bowie and Lamar, so the students, don't quote me on it, they're sophomores or juniors now. So that's why you're not, you're gonna see more students there. We're rolling it into the school, and that will continue to grow some. At Bowie, it focuses on health science and Lamar, business and cybersecurity. This year, we launched Sam Houston and Seguin with logistics and mechatronics and engineering and computer-aided drafting. So the numbers are a little lower there. That's just our freshman class um over at the campus. Oops. See if I can scoot forward. Now, one of the things I led with was making sure that all of our students understood their own access to these programs. And that's around our strategy four point one point two, which is redesigning the junior high course registration process that we use on all of our campuses with all of our students to increase their awareness of what the specialized programs are and the career pathways that we author offer through those programs. So all of our eighth-grade students complete a career interest inventory. This identifies their top three career interest. Then these interest inventories can be used in conversations with their guidance counselors to develop their high school plan that they'll have that will help to engage them through all four years of high school. Our counselors facilitate two college and career guidance lessons with all of our eighth-grade students across the district that help them understand the pathway options um as they transition into high school. All of our eighth-grade students also get to go to an in-person field trip over at our CTC Center. And they get to go over and really see in person the different programs and what they have to offer. So that hopefully they can identify with one or or two of those and really gain an interest in in pursuing that. So we we get a lot of feed uh positive feedback from that uh in-person experience at our CTC Center. Our eighth-grade students at all of our campuses also complete a four-year plan. They complete this with their school counselor, and it can identify a career pathway and an endorsement selection that we'll have that will go with them throughout the four years. And so we want them to enter as an eighth grader with a vision of where they're going and how they're going to complete their journey and graduate from high school. So it's an important step, I think, in in what we do with that. And then here's one of my favorite slides. It's some of our students just engaging in the programming that we have through the CTE program, architecture and construction, culinary law, sports medicine. That's fun learning, and it's engaging for our students. And maybe that one opportunity during the day that, you know, spurs a child to say, I'm going to school today. And that's great. That's why we're here. So strategy four point one point three further helps this goal of ensuring that all of our students understand the program that we have and how they can access it. We implemented a four-day summer CTE career exploration camp this summer for our seventh and eighth-grade students across the district. The CTE camp was hosted in July. There were a hundred and eighty-nine seventh and eighth-grade students that attended, and we received really good feedback from it. They were able to participate in twelve exploratory rotations that allowed them to experience the CTE programming, and you can see those listed there. So if they came for three days and didn't get excited about one of those, I don't know. But uh lots of good feedback, and that's a strategy that we definitely want to continue. Our next strategy that I want to talk about this evening is equitably resourcing classrooms and materials and instructional supports. I know we've talked about this in quite a few presentations that I've done over the fall, and it really has been a focus of our work. Um, so I'll bring you back to some of those examples of how we've implemented that. Um, all of our pre-K and first-grade bilingual teachers received training um instructional resources to engage their students in the one-way dual-language programming. So a plan was rolled out that didn't leave that to chance. All of our teachers received those materials, and all of our teachers received that training and are receiving the ongoing support from the World Languages Department. All elementary principals were trained and received the principal toolkit in supporting the teachers in the one-way dual-language implementation. And they've continued to receive uh guidance and support from our World Languages Department. All elementary campuses received additional decodable readers to support instruction in grades K through three. We know that over the course of the last couple of years with the um with the better understanding of the science of teaching reading, we needed to resource classrooms a little bit different and make sure that every teacher had access to those decodable readers so they could really leverage that in their classroom. So we got a lot of positive feedback. Teachers were excited to to receive those. And then we updated the comprehensive literacy plan and the comprehensive math plan to include the district resources for teachers, really focusing on accessibility, user-friendliness. Because we want to be sure that regardless if you're a first-year teacher, you're a bridge teacher, you're a ten-year teacher, you can easily access those access those materials and use those to support the planning process. The CLP was also modified to align with the science of teaching reading. We know that for some teachers, that may have been, they could do it. It's not a problem. We know there are probably many other teachers that needed that support. They need more ready resources and more explicit, more explicitly aligning it because they're newer to the profession, or they've always taught math and they step into reading, and now I'm going to do this. We want to give them the resources to help them be uh successful regardless of the experience they have. So there's been a real effort. Is it perfect? No, we'll continue to take feedback and continue to build on that. But um definitely, we're continuing to modify and align those. All of our principals were trained and updated on the STAR with an emphasis on changes and how we're assessing writing. Significant changes in that. We had um great training with our principals this fall and received really good feedback from them. There were a lot of aha moments. You know, the first challenge is understanding it so you can lead that work. And I can say, I I topped fourth grade writing. But there were a lot of new changes, like you had to dig into it and get your mind wrapped around it. And we believe that principals have to really understand that before they can really lead it. And so we did that. They'll come back, uh, I think it's next week or the following week, and participate in a PLC for principals around writing. So we're gonna ask them to go back out, get some data, get some work examples, and come back, and we're gonna analyze that again. So that's the type of instructional support that we're making sure regardless if you're a twenty-year principal or you're a first-year principal, we're gonna support you to be successful on our priority work in the district. Um, we've created the unit pacing calendars to help support teacher planning, another tool that allows them to really focus on the execution of work by making the planning part easier. And so we have those unit pacing calendars there. We have exemplar lessons that were integrated into the curriculum companion documents. Um, we have our district problem-solving model in math that was launched this year. Um, and we've been giving implementation supports just this past week. Curriculum and Instruction, Office of School Leadership, did a calibrated walkthrough just to observe where are we seeing evidence that these practices are starting to take hold? And how can we best support our teachers in this implementation through professional learning or resources? And so we're continuing that level of support as well. Uh, we have plug-and-play activities that were developed to support teacher planning. That's been something that was launched this year. For plug-and-play activities, they've been at a rate of creating one per grade level or content area per six weeks, and they'll continue to develop those. These are ready-made, aligned activities that are built into the curriculum that may leverage things like learning.com, Canvas, STEM Scopes. But think of it more like a turnkey example for a teacher of a lesson that's aligned. And so they've been gradually adding those over time. And TI Square actually monitors, they have a whole, for for the da- for the people who love data in the group, I've actually seen it, that they have a whole dashboard where they monitor click-throughs. And they can tell who's downloaded those and what the click-throughs are like because that helps to say, is this a, is this a tool that's useful? And the answer is yes. I was looking over some data, and I can tell you, like at the elementary, they access reading more than they access math. They access both, but that's important, you know? Where might we have the need for more of these? And where are we, where are we okay with it? So anyway, I was glad to see that um that we're awesome, we're monit- monitoring that implementation. And then there's an innovative equipment checkout system that's been developed. When we think about um equitably resourcing classrooms, and there's a lot of um technology tools that we can't have in every classroom or even at every campus. And so TI Square has been uh working really hard to create a checkout system. So if I'm a teacher and I would like to use an owl for um a lesson in my classroom, they can go and check that out and use that piece of equipment in their classroom and then return it. So where we may not be able to have them everywhere, we have them accessible to all. That's something that they've launched this year and will continue to promote with teachers, uh, even down to knowing how to use that. Because you might look at a list and go, what is that? And so they're thinking of ways that they can get that out to teachers so they can understand how they can leverage those tools um in the classroom. And here's just a couple of examples, some pictures of the great materials that every single one of our um K and one teachers implementing one-way dual-language received in their classroom. And there's nothing like being a teacher and getting all this bright, new, shiny stuff that you can use. And then the principal toolkit is also on there. And then, of course, pictures of the decodable readers that all of our K through three teachers received as well. So next steps for us, moving into three year, year three. Again, we're still wrapping up year two as far as um really kind of assessing the impact of those and what strategies we may need to continue or tweak as we move in into year three. So committee met this week, we'll continue to meet and refine that. And now we're switching our focus over to year three next steps because one of our first steps is to pull the strategic planning uh committee together. We've identified our portfolio managers, which help to make sure that we have solid implementation. They'll develop a plan to roll out the strategies to be able to achieve this goal. They'll identify what the impact's going to be and how we're going to measure it so that each ti- each time we come together on a quarterly cadence as a committee, we'll be able to talk about what evidence is i-exist? And how are we collecting that? Do we know the implementation is going well, or do we need to make some refinements? And so this year, we've really gotten in a cadence of doing that. And that's the, we're at that initial planning stage for year three right now. And then um administration will continue to provide quarterly updates on the strategic plan to the school board. Any questions?
Ms. Richardson?
Thank you, Dr. Buell, for your presentation. I have two different questions in two different areas. And the first one is gonna be on page eight, or it is slide uh strategy four point one point two. Right, go back.
There we go.
This one. Okay, I have a couple of questions because I love that we are laying this out for our eighth-grade students, that we are saying, here's all the different ways that you can visit. We're gonna have counselors facilitate this. You're gonna get to go to the career tech. You get all of these options. My question is, knowing students that are in this stage of life right now, they are, these eighth graders are being asked to make their selections earlier and earlier. Are we giving them these opportunities early enough for them to be informed to make those decisions? Are we sure that those are aligned together? Because if not, it's great that we give them information, but if they're having to make their choices in the early fall, then the education comes too late.
Right, right. You know, that's a good question, and I'd have to look at specifically when those field trips, you know, happen or those opportunities happen. Um, I can't answer that specific question, but I think it's it's point well-taken. And I'll
They, just to see if we can align with counselors.
Sure, that makes sense.
And those making those decisions because I love everything here. Let them know their choices, because if they can't see what's at the diaper center, how do they know their world of opportunity?
Yeah.
And in eighth grade, I cannot imagine being told, make your plan for the next four years. I I'm forty-three years old. I can't even make my plan right now for four weeks sometimes. So to know, to ask an eighth grader, what do you want to do for four years? I want to make sure they have as much education as possible.
Sure, and they do regularly meet with their counselors. But I I let me go back. My my gut says yes, and I haven't validated that. But uh, but I definitely think it's point well-taken. And um, you know, our counselors continue to meet with our with our students, you know, throughout the years and are available. I think that's one thing we do really well in Arlington is um we have, we are, we are resourced well with counselors at our high school to support our students and their planning. And so um, you know, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna jump ship to something different right now. Page six, strategy three point three one.
Okay.
I am very thankful to our calendar committee. And what you said where they took the teacher input of doing midweek starting points and understanding why that adds value to a teacher's schedule and what they value, having that time before students come in. I am so grateful that y'all are doing that. Here is my question. We have been throwing a wrench in our plans as parents, as educators, as employees of the district that we did approve our bo- uh, we approved it on December seventh. After that, Mansfield ISD came out with their calendar. They typically align with our date for spring break. They do not this year. So we now have the problem of having parents who maybe teach in Mansfield and their students go to Arlington. Their spring breaks will not line up, so how does a family vacation together? What happens to the parent that's What happens to the parent that's working in Mansfield and their students off for a week without childcare? Do we, do we take initiative and go back to the calendar committee and say, do we want to revise or amend to make life easier for our people? Do we say, we came out with ours first? I am truly asking, cause I don't know the answer, but I know I hear community feedback saying, this is frustrating. And I know it's not us. We, we voted, we love what the calendar committee came to us with. But I think about those who teach, I think of Trustee McMurro who teaches in Mansfield, has a child in AISD. But I also think of the hundreds and hundreds of other families this directly affects. Would we consider going back and looking at our calendar?
So the, the staff can evaluate that. This is a scenario that happens every year. Because no district, every district operates autonomously and they have the ability to adopt a calendar that best suits their community's needs. Sometimes this occurs. We have faculty members that live in Dallas that drive into Arlington. We have faculty members living in Grand Prairie and drive into Arlington. So it, the decision about altering a calendar or even revisiting has to be really considered across, like where do our employees come from? How does that impact the way that their, their ability to be with their families when, um, schools starting and stopping based on the vacation times? Um, it can't be isolated to one, um, district. But that being said, there's nothing wrong with the district going back and reevaluating our decision and deciding whether that impact is significant enough that we should elevate it to the board level and let you reconsider. Um, but it would be more comprehensive. It would look really about employees living outside in multiple districts, cause they all kinda come into Arlington's for so large, yeah.
Of course. I, I just know that this is the first year in quite some time it hasn't aligned. And the feedback from our stakeholders is, they're frustrated. And not with us, but with how it came out in the end. So if that, I would urge us to be proactive, to do right by our stakeholders and our teachers, just to look. Because it never hurt, I'm okay if we change our mind. It's okay, we don't have to say, just because we did this, it can't change. I think we can look at it. Um, but that, please do not think that I'm not saying, I'm not thankful to the calendar committee. They did amazing, we loved what we were given.
Sure.
But when new information comes to light, I just wanna make sure we look at it. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Do I have any other trustees with questions or comments? Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, President Fowler. And Dr. Buell, I appreciate all the information. I love strategic plan updates, um, and that's not in jest, I, I really do. When I first came on this board, I was the primary instigator promoter that we needed strategic plans, we didn't have one. Um, and now we're singing along with multiple plans and quarterly updates and holding ourselves as a board, holding the district accountable. So it, it's wonderful to see this. These are great things that have been initiated and implemented. Just to, I may have a question in here, but really it's just some, some points to note. The calendar committee was something that we didn't really have information on, uh, when I was first on the board, let alone such a large transparent process, uh, with, with full disclosure of who's on it and what the, the, uh, the recommendations were. When I first began the calendar, we had to really assert that this is for the academic achievement of students. And there were so many in the community that were coming at us for, well, we should do this and we should do this in this holiday and that holiday. And it took a lot of fortitude to just really kinda put our feet down and go, no, this is about the achievement of students, which ultimately benefits our community. So I love that, uh, it's, it's where it's at. The other thing that's on this slide and on the next one regarding, uh, social and emotional wellbeing, SEL, social emotional learning, that has been coined, uh, by some as a, a negative thing. That, oh, it's an indoctrination and, and public education's bad and it's associated with other things. And what I have said for many years, we all have, this is about mental health. Uh, this is to ensure that our learners are mentally prepared in the right state of mind. That's what SEL is all about. And I think by presenting this update, uh, it's, it's transparent and it shows that that's really what it is about. Your examples are, are, are wonderful there, so I just wanted to put that out there. The students that are engaged in the career interest inventory, I don't know that we're still doing it or it's, it's changed over the years, but our first strategic plan, we as a board came up with, uh, uh, the CTAHEI, Career Tech Higher Education Investigations, which is where this, uh, uh, interest inventory, I believe, began. And part of the reason behind that, and this is, this is maybe the only question that I have, was to get students engaged so that they could see what opportunities lie ahead for them. Uh, so that they, they don't go, I need to go help, uh, my family, I've gotta go earn some money. I need to drop out, there's no path for me, cause I'm not going to college. And college versus career and all of that, di- different topic. But do you have any data at this point, or can you correlate at all that it has actually moved the needle in, in aiding, uh, the prevention or reduction of that, the, that loss of children? Cause what we identified was, it was that eighth, ninth that they were gone. And I don't know if we have anything reflecting that, but.
That's not a question we've studied. Um, it's something we can look into. Uh, one thing that's, would be important to note in terms of looking into the answer to that question is the evolution of that course over the last ten years. Um, we would have to isolate our subject group in terms of understanding what the implications were of those that are, have participated. Partly because it's an elective now, not every student's required to participate. And then also, when students leave us, um, and they graduate, it, it's sometimes difficult to understand where they actually land. As you kinda see from the taper tonight, we understand where, where students land in terms of universities or two-year colleges in Texas. But once they leave Texas, we kind of lose grasp. Um, even the National Warehouse data is difficult to really desirate. So, uh, we can try to investigate the question. Um, there's just a couple of variables we'd have to consider.
Okay, okay. And, and I, I think overall, when we first approached this, I mean, this was definitely more, and probably is more of a more subjective and qualitative type of data. I don't think there's any one specific thing that we can point to and go, this objectively uh, is categorically the reason for X or Y. That's, that's always a, a complicated question to ask what, in program evaluation, what's working, what's not. But, um, it just, it only makes good sense with all the opportunities that are there. The, the twelve, uh, career tech programs that you're highlighting here, uh, does, is, matches the overall programs. Actually, it's more than the overall programs that we had available for career tech opportunities. Not the certifications that are thirty-four plus certifications. Uh, we had ten, I think, career tech opportunities that were decentralized in, in different campuses. And so the, the opportunities to show our students, here's, you know, the windshield's in front of you, here's the world. Uh, we, we are just getting better and better and better at that. And that, that's just amazing. And then, yeah, the, the only other comment, it's, it's not a question, is, uh, I really liked hearing what you had to say about the, you know, the principals even going back and, and getting, uh, updates and, uh, having to, ha- to, to realize internally what this means so that they can lead effectively. And as a healthcare educator, uh, we call that CPD, Continuous Professional Development. It, it's just what it is. And for some, it's uncomfortable and it's like, uh, instead of going to a CE program and checking the box, yeah, I got my number of hours of CE. It's all about, uh, the, the worth of that information. Is it truly helping you individually grow in your field and, and expertise? So I, I just love that that's, uh, something that you're doing. And, uh, those plug and play activities, um, what a time saver resource for our staff. Wow, that's amazing. I, I envision things of, uh, almost a commercial rollout of, here's what's new for this year. So everybody can go, wow, that's really cool, I'm gonna check that one out. That's just amazing. Uh, anything that we can do, and as a board, uh, we are committed to stand behind uh, anything we can do to help our teachers get a hand up on what they need to do to be more effective. Uh, because there, they have so many stressors, so many demands, and their student body population, uh, is, is ever challenging. And anything we can do to help them really focus in on the love of that kid instead of, where can I get this? How can I get this? These are things that just didn't exist. And I, I don't know this, I haven't studied this, but I would say that we are leading out on this. That there's not, I would go as far as saying any, because I'm kinda biased, but one of the very few in the state, if not the nation, that have such an inventory ready for our educators. And that's phenomenal. And that, I say kudos to you guys and kudos to my colleagues for standing up and making sure it's a priority. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. And I'd be remiss if I didn't, um, call out Dr. Reich again for being part of that team that gave us the discipline of the strategic plan. What are we, is our third, third strategic plan? So it all started back when he first got on the board or some years after. Yeah, and, um, as a trustee that have come on and even before then, the discipline of, of this document in terms of guiding our work and our budget and what's important has been invaluable. So thanks for, thank you guys for the vision you guys had back then, and here we are. There's still a lot of good stuff in here. The previous, my previous colleagues have covered most of it. But, um, I do wanna point out on three point three, Strategy three point three, the things that you guys are doing there to really focus in on what matters for teachers in terms of their effectiveness and really preserving that PLC time. I think, my guess is this is one of the biggest improvements that we've made. I don't know if you would concur, but.
We get a lot of positive feedback on it. We're giving them time to do planning and the planning is the most important thing to impact that teaching and learning.
Absolutely. And not only that, but in the PLCs to implement PLCs with fidelity. Um, and that's where we know DDI occurs. And we know what, how that is in the effective school framework and it's just a proven best practice. And, um, so my guess is just doing that one simple thing is going to build the capacity for even greater student achievement. Uh, effective teaching and teachers feeling like they're really making a difference. So, um, thank you for that. And, uh, you know, some of the other things that you covered, Dr. Reich mentioned, the plug and play, focusing on what we've been hearing for years that teachers are missing to be effective. Given all the time constraints they have, we're giving back their time and making their jobs simpler. So they can focus on what's important, that's quality tier-one instruction. So thank you, this has been, um, you know, a gr- well, in terms of the teacher positive feedback that I've been getting, you guys are really making a difference in the right way. Uh, and it's great to hear that, so hopefully we can continue that. Uh, continue to set the bar hot, high in terms of making it easy for the teachers to do the job they, uh, love and, um, have the kinda student outcomes that we know our students deserve. The other thing, I'll be, I'll be brief, I'll cut this down. On the first two slides, um, it's great that we're doing a lot of great, um, communications to our parents and other stakeholders. Um, but most of my colleagues here all have children in the district. My kids have matriculated out and, um, into college. Would it be possible for us to get, at least, you know, especially those like me that don't have kids in the district, to get copies of those sent to us? Um, or samples or are those made available so that we can see what kinda communication's going? The weekly, meaning, on slide two, um, on two, under two point two, the bi-weekly communication to the parents and the communication to the staff and, um.
Sure, we can, we can, we can send you some, I'm, I'll send it, I'm sending that one out tomorrow, so I'll, I'll make sure you get a copy.
And it's great that we're, we're really controlling our, our brand equity all the way down to the campus level. Um, in the next slide, where are we enrolling up the new campus, uh, rebranding?
I would, I don't know where we are. Anita may be able to speak to that with the number of campuses. Are you talking about like the mascots?
Are you talking about Carter, the new junior high that we're building?
Well, it says that we're, um, we're, it says we're developing new school logos, mascots and mark, marks, uh, even at the department level.
Yes. And I can let Anita speak to that. I know like with the departments, they've been working with each of us and doing a focus group to say, what's, what are your important deliverables as a department? What is your focus? And they've helped us with actually coming up with what is our logo or our branding that we use? So that there's consistency as we're communicating out to campuses, to parents. I know they just worked with me on the CAO office to create that. We did one last year for OSL. Um, and then I, I would let you speak to the mascots and, and the others.
I don't, I don't think you need me, cause Christie said that really well. Um, a- and I don't think this is a surprise to anyone. We, we have a lot of branding and it doesn't all work together. Because we, we haven't taken a comprehensive approach to looking at branding. So that's what we've started doing. Uh, we do have a graphic designer that works with us. Um, and we work with the schools, we work with the departments, uh, we work with programming. So when they're starting an initiative or rebranding an initiative, it falls in line now with the brand standards that we've built for the district. So if, um, I mean, we've probably done thirty of our schools with new brands. Um, we've done almost all of our departments, so we work our way down the list. Uh, and to make sure that ultimately, uh, each of our departments, uh, doesn't have just a suite of things that don't make any sense, uh, graphically and design-wise. We want everything to flow. So if you get something from the Arlington ISD or you guys are out in public and you're wearing your shirt, people understand that you work for the Arlington ISD. Uh, we still have a long way to go. This is a very big district, it has many moving parts. Uh, all, all of those parts have some kind of a brand. Might have been around from the, the eighties or nineties even. So step by step, and, and it's gonna take probably two more years to get through everything. Uh, but we've probably, at this point, just as a rough estimate, have done at, at least upwards of a hundred new brands for different programs, school mascots, um, departments, uh, events, all of those things. The website, we've completely rebranded that, I'm sure y'all have seen that. So, uh, that's what we're continuing to do. And again, that will be ongoing and we will keep working on it.
Sounds like this is the perfect time to ask you, since you're pretty far down the line with that, it, for a board briefing, um, on where we are in the rebranding and some examples. Because I can't, I didn't realize that we had actually rebranded any of the campuses. Now, and, and the only word of caution I would give is when we get to the high schools, our alumni are really particular about those brands.
High schools are in good shape because they are all copyrighted. The rest of our schools don't have to be, I don't know if y'all knew that, but high schools do. And so we work with them to make sure that we have the proper, um, copyrighted materials on file with the state. But we're there now, we've got all the schools completely branded, all the high schools. So they're all in good shape.
Okay, great.
Yes, we wouldn't dare. Put it that way.
Good, good. Good to hear that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster.
Thank you.
Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, Dr. Buell. Um, you touched a little bit on, um, the new plug and play, uh, lessons for teachers and you kind of gave a short summary of that. Can you, how, I guess, are those chosen? So like, if it was math as a content area, how are they determining, okay, let's, let's do a plug and play on this teak? Or let's do a plug and play lesson for this instructional strategy? How is that chosen and then how are our teachers trained on it?
So I, I'll tell you, um, a couple of things. And I wish they were here to give you the nitty-gritty, but I'll answer it the best that I know how. Um, with the high priority teaks that, um, provide teachers examples that they can, their goal is to create those plug and play activities that will be useful to a broad spectrum of teachers. And so I think they hit on those high priority standards, uh, within each of the units of instruction. Um, they're developing those one a six weeks per grade level or content area. And we have those listed out and of course, monitoring use. Um, during our content roadmap sessions, part of that has been to preview those plug and. During our content roadmap sessions, part of that has been to preview those plug and plays and to try to promote those as a tool that teachers could access. So I know that's been part of their agenda discussions during our content roadmap sessions. It's new this year. And so curriculum and instruction is really working with the campuses to try to highlight those and talk about how they can be used when they're planning their lessons. We also, we, a higher percent, we shoot for 50, but I don't want to throw it all out there, with our curriculum and instruction team out supporting campuses this year. It's been a big goal to work with principals and collaboratively determine how they can best support campuses because we know that at each campus, they have unique needs. And so a good, a good example of that would be when they sit down with the principal or the dean and they plan out, how can we best support? That could be a request from our campus. If they said, hey, we're not seeing a lot of use or my teachers are still struggling with planning, then we could have someone from CNI go work with a particular grade level during a PLC meeting and pull that up and work with it and work through some lessons. So we really have, we're trying to find that balance of autonomy at the campus and based on the individual needs of the campus. And we have these great instructional tools that we want to be sure you're aware of so that you can use them. So this year I would say it's been this balance of finding that. And you know, like I said, the, the click-throughs, the downloads show they're being used, they're being accessed. Our goal would be if there's pockets where they're not, which I'm sure TI Square is all over, then let's get out to that campus and let's make sure they're aware of it. And that's kind of the value of having that data down to each content area and grade level.
Thank you so much. That's great to hear. And I, I like that if they need more support in the, like the how, the delivery of the instruction.
Absolutely.
Then they can just connect where CNI is coming onto the campus to provide support. Something that I appreciate is that we do give our teachers that autonomy. And I, I mean, I, I know I'm in a governance role, but personally feel a certain type of way about a tightly scripted lesson. So plug and play could have a different connotation. So I do appreciate you kind of clarifying what that means. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Do we have any other trustees with comments or questions? All right, Dr. Buell, thank you so very much.
Thank you all. We appreciate y'all's leadership and thank you to our board members this month. And thank you for just the leadership, the guidance that you provide us to help us be the best we can for our kids.
Thank you so much. We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any registered speakers?
Yes, ma'am. We have seven registered speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. And Ms. Forsberg, I'd like to give three minutes instead of two minutes to each speaker. Thank you. Gina Woodley. Is Gina Woodley here?
Yes, I am. Is there any way that I could switch with Mr. Jarvis and have him go for me?
Sure.
Appreciate, okay, I appreciate it.
Yes. Welcome, Mr. Jarvis. The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or debate and trustees will not reply to the speaker. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have three minutes to speak and Ms. Forsberg will notify you when your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, President Fowler. On June 8th of last year, in violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act, this board unlawfully closed and ordered all concerned citizens to leave the room during a hearing before this board. On September 21st of last year, this board received a demand letter from my attorney requesting that you reschedule another Level Four hearing that was open to the public. The board was informed that if you refused to comply with the law and provide me with an open hearing, a lawsuit would be filed. We also informed the board if you gave me an open hearing, no lawsuit would be filed. You ignored the demand letter and refused to give me a new hearing open to the public. Today, this morning, a lawsuit was filed naming AISD and each board member as defendants in the lawsuit. The closing of the hearing is part of a pattern of AISD concealing and actively obstructing information. In November of 2022, a senior official informed me that all AISD administrators were simply too busy to answer any of my questions or requests for information. They could not meet with me, speak with me, respond to any of my emails. When I asked this senior official if this email that he sent to me was sent to all public inquiries or was this prohibition targeted to deny only me access to district administrators, the official ignored my question confirming that I alone was targeted and denied access to all district administrators. The board knows about this targeted denial of my access to district administrators and this board has refused to take any corrective action to rescind that, that instruction of that email. In March of 2023, senior officials banned interested citizens who simply wanted to observe public complaint hearings without policy authority to do so. In my judgment, this was a lawless act not supported by anything in the current AISD policy dealing with public grievances. Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code states that a government body may not prohibit public criticism of the government body by closing the board meeting as you did on June 8th. By doing so, you prohibited public criticism of the board's lack of oversight on moral issues of great importance to the public. The board's decision to unlawfully close the June 8th hearing was clearly designed to conceal the conduct of district officials and avoid accountability of those same officials and the board to parents, taxpayers and voters. For the past 14 months, I've submitted at least 17 grievances and every grievance was preceded by an email to every member of this board. Without exception, every time I sent an email, this board ignored the email, would not respond, would not provide information, answer questions. Although your policy says you encourage informal resolution before filing a formal grievance, there's no informal resolution because every member of the board refuses to respond. Thank you. By the way, I've got copies of the lawsuit right here for the President Fowler or Attorney Icoman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Yes, ma'am. Gina Woodley?
Good evening. There was a simple question that was emailed to the board multiple times by Mr. Jarvis about 14 months ago. And that question was, what is your policy on how a teacher should respond to a student if they ask them a question pertaining to gender confusion? For example, if a boy says, I think I'm a girl, what should I do? Or vice versa? Or I'm confused about my gender. What do you recommend? Instead of an answer from you guys or any back and forth collaboration, there has been stonewalling, refusing to respond to emails and name-calling by the lead senior representative. We did receive a hint of an answer from Dr. Hill, Assistant Superintendent on September 2022, who asked Mr. Jarvis after a board meeting, what's your end game, Jarvis? Mr. Jarvis replied, I want to know if AISD supports parental rights, to which Dr. Hill said, that's not what you're asking. What am I asking, Dr. Hill? Asked Mr. Jarvis. Dr. Hill said, you're asking us to pick sides. And if we pick sides, some people will get upset. Let that sink in. You refuse to put a policy in place protecting children and teachers because you don't want one side to get upset. In my world, that is wrong and cowardly, being more afraid of offending someone than standing up for what's right. What you should do is pick the side that protects the students and the teachers. And how does it protect the teachers? You could direct them on how to respond when asked this question about gender confusion or sexuality. I have asked, I have talked to several teachers at AISD that have had to wing it because y'all do not have a policy on this matter. And they have expressed fear in saying the wrong thing and not having the protection of the school board. If a teacher supports transgenderism, how do you suppose they'll answer this child? They can answer it however they want now, giving their own personal bias. This policy should also state if these questions arise that the teacher sends the student to a school counselor who is trained for situations like this, reassuring their safety and confidentiality, taking the teacher out of the loop and bringing in a trained counselor who can then bring the parents in, reassuring the student that they will be there with them. Until you fix this, how can parents trust you with their children and reelect you? Lastly, the senior legal counsel for AISD called myself and six other caring, taxpaying citizens minions just for being at a meeting to support Mr. Jarvis on March 29th last year. Dr. Cavassos just sat there not admonishing this person for his immature name-calling, even after the second time that he called as minions. The board should publicly admonish this person and demand he give a public apology. I am also asking Matt, Dr. Smith, the new AISD superintendent, to replace this law firm with a legal firm that will treat parents professionally and respectfully, not calling them immature names, just for asking questions about the care of their children. For anyone wanting more information, please visit beginwithtruth.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodley. Linda Martin? Welcome, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. I am here representing myself and some coworkers from transportation. Some of our veteran employees are concerned that some of our new employees that have been, for instance, bus attendants, non-CDO drivers and so forth, coming in and making more money than the veterans that have been there 10, 15, 20 years. So that is a concern that we have on that issue. And so we just, you know, we can't get any answers to it. Yet we're still being, you know, faithful employees that have been here for years. But then we have to sit back and watch others come in who would like bus attendants, non-CDO drivers, and they're making more money than the people that have been here, supported their children, taken the children to school. Most of us don't even miss work. So that's one of my concerns and some of my other coworkers as well. So I just wanted to address that issue. Thank you.
Have you spoken with Dr. Hill regarding?
Not personally. But like I said, not just me, but other coworkers are concerned about that issue. And it has been brought up and I'm sure, not sure, but possibly he has heard of us wondering why these ones are coming and making more.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Rose Truesdale? Welcome, Ms. Truesdale. I believe we spoke on the phone earlier today.
Yes, we did. Thank you so much. Hello. Thank you all for loaning me your time this evening. I had a few things I needed to speak on about the facilities at Transportation. The facilities, they're so old. It's falling down. We, it's, the ceiling has leaked for so long that it's actually coming down on us in the break room. If you can call it a break room. We, we're there to take a break, but you can't be comfortable there. We try to come, you know, communicate with one another and have just a place to go to, pretty much relax when you're not driving or what have you. But it's very hard to do in the facilities like that. There's mold on the walls. There's not even a restroom inside our break room. We have to leave the break room and go outside in the weather or the inclement weather or what have you, just to use the restroom. I went this morning, I left the break room to go outside to use the restroom. Nevertheless, to get to the restroom this morning with the temperature the way it was, there was no heat. This facility is so old and out of date. Our parking is just ridiculous. We have to park all the way, some of us park all the way in the West Lot. And to park in the West Lot, if it's raining, by the time you make it up to the Transportation window, you're soaking wet. And we stand outside every morning to the Transportation window, most mornings. When it's cold like this morning, they started the buses for us. Most mornings, we stand out there in the weather and we have to wait for someone at the window to give us our keys or notebooks or whatever the case may be for us to go on about our day. We stand out there in that weather for one person that they want to, to help all of us that are there in line. It is just, it's just getting to be ridiculous where it's, it's really hard for us to, to, to function in the right state of mind when you have to, when you know you're coming into an environment that's not so inviting. And also the, with the parking, we used to park close to security. Security told us, well, told our new director that we no longer needed to park over there because they were going to have new employees coming in. It's been a couple of months and we haven't been parking there. No one is parking there. But yet we're still walking from the back of the parking lot, passing those spaces that are totally empty. We have Suburbans that are parked in our, in our staff parking lot. They park in a staff park, the staff parks in the parking lot right across from the office where they can leisurely get out of their vehicles and go straight into the office. There's Suburbans also that are in that lot where as coaches come and pick up those Suburbans to take the kids to and from where they need to be. The coaches come, they get the keys. And once they get the keys, they get in their vehicles and they go to the Suburban, which is right across the street. Instead of they moving the Suburbans in the back and moving us up front, we're just walking to and from in the weather. I thank y'all so much for your time and y'all have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Truesdale. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I, I do recognize in this is non-agenda forum. I can only ask factual questions, but I believe I have a question for Mr. Horn.
Good evening, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Recognizing this is not agenda, so can't go into a lot of detail, not a presentation. Are the facilities that Ms. Truesdale just described part of the bond projects to renovate Transportation?
Yes, they are. And in fact, this board has approved to accelerate that project. You approved that back in the fall to accelerate that project from a later phase into the current phase. And we, actually staff had the first meeting on design of the new facility today, this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Juanita Cabana? Welcome, Ms. Cabana.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I am asking that everything I say tonight is without prejudice. I have, I've been a driver first, almost eight years. Never seen situation that is going on like today. We have people gathering and talking about situation that's going on in the office with some staff. And there's like miscommunication. There's drivers that send emails to their foremen. They don't answer them back. There's foremen that takes and yell at the, through the radios inappropriately saying, like enforcing, like this driver's not doing their jobs. And there's some situation that has been going on. Attendants listening to new drivers that comes in and saying, hey, I'm leaving this place because this is nowhere to be, to work with. I mean, I don't like this area. They, and this attendant was talking when I was approaching and I, and I asked. And she said, yes. And he was talking on the phone while driving. I asked her, did you approach the, the foreman? She said, yes. And what they have done? She said, they have done nothing. He's still around. So we are hiring new people and they're using our district money for just to be one month or two months there? For what? I mean, we're losing, we are the drivers. I've been in this district for so, for a few years, but I have, and the only time that I was very ill, it was in one year that I was absent 17 times. But now I'm not. I'm only half a day absent in the whole year. And I'm wondering what's going to happen to all of us when this district starts coming down? Because a lot of people have talked about it. And a lot of people said that we are going to crash. And if we crash, they mentioned that this Durham company is going to take over and going to terminate all transportation drivers. I don't want that to happen to Transportation. I don't want that to happen to our district. We are here for our children, no matter what. I get up at four o'clock in the morning and I am at work before five o'clock to make sure that if I have a flat tire or my coworkers that I see early in the morning, sometimes before me, park there, we make sure that those kid has a driver to go pick them up. And it's not fair that we have to come and start having trouble with, with our foremans, which I said I have one of the problems. And I went to even approach Mr. Johnson and I said, Mr. Johnson, why you don't go out there and ask the employees, the drivers, how's your day? Do you have any issues? Can you come to me, tell me? Just take a notepad or pencil, just write down what they're telling you. Try to find the other problem of that situation, solution for that problem. I'm sorry. And this is going on and on. And this. And this is going on and on, and this is getting worse. This year, it's been worse. I mean, it's the worst, and a lot of people are talking about that.
Thank you, ma'am. Daryl Montgomery.
Hi. My name's Daryl Montgomery, and I'm a retired CPA. My daughter's graduated from Arlington High School, and my wife and I have lived in Arlington for 40-plus years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate that. First, I appreciate the dedicated service of each of, each of you. It's a big deal, a lot to think through and a lot of time involved, and I appreciate your service. I congratulate Dr. Smith on being chosen as Arlington's new superintendent. In reading AISD's announcement of Dr. Smith as superintendent, I was interested to learn his doctorate is in school leadership from Concordia University, and I'd like to just briefly address the subject of leadership, especially in an area known as substance over form. As an accountant, substance over form leadership is a critically important subject. Accountants, as leaders in the financial community, we are required by regulators to convey transactions in their true substance, good and bad, and not just hide behind the technical form of issues. When this is done well, accountants garner trust with the public because of transparency. When not done well and things are hidden, you have failures. One such failure was Enron. In my research for tonight's comments, I read an article about, by Daniel Weesberg, discussing substance over form in education leadership. Quoting Mr. Weesberg, education leaders are defined mostly by their style, not by their substance of their ideas. Style certainly matters in leadership, but what a leader actually accomplishes matters even more. The hallmark of cage-busting leaders isn't how noisily they bust cages, it's whether their policies make things better for teachers and students over the long haul. Committing one exemplary leader in education, Mr. Weesberg states, "Her accomplishments have stood the test of time." I appreciate how tonight the, the board has discussed strategies to improve the educational process, which will stand the test of time. I appreciate that very much. My understanding of Mr. Jarvis's request to this board had been, does AISD have a policy which addresses what students are told when they are having gender confusion issues? And if AISD has a policy, what is it? My perception is he's been stonewalled numerous times with terse, short, and non-helpful responses, responses that are anything but transparent as to AISD's policy in this area. Instead, there has been a reliance on legal form instead of addressing the substance of Mr. Jarvis's request. I'm confident this will not build trust with parents of AISD students and the general public. Again, I want to say thank you, board members, for your service. As board members and as Arlington's leaders of education, I would ask, is this the way this board should answer valid questions asked by the public? Is this the way to convey transparency on this issue? Is this the way to communicate respect to parents and teachers on this issue? Is it being proactive to protect students and teachers from the chaos on this issue? Again, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Fowler. I have a clarification question or two for Mr. Eichelbaum. Mr. Eichelbaum, and thank you for, for coming up and under the understanding it's not agenda, no presentation, just factual questions. The June, the June 8th, 2023 grievances that were heard by the board and referenced by Mr. Jarvis?
Yes.
Was there a right of appeal to the Texas Education Agency from the denial of those grievances?
Yes, under the Texas Education Code.
Did Mr. Jarvis appeal those, the denial of those grievances?
He did not.
Is there a, was a reference made to the board receiving emails and requesting the board informally decide certain matters in those emails? Is there a way for the board members, without violating the Texas Open Meetings Act, to communicate among themselves outside of a board meeting and make decisions?
No, that would be illegal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eichelbaum. Jerelyn King. Jerelyn King. We'll now move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Works.
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to share some information about some exciting news that's happened since my last report. Last month, I told you about two coaches and a trainer who performed life-saving measures, and they weren't the only ones. At Beckham Elementary, we have Nurse Brittany Isbell, who performed CPR and used AED on a staff member at school after she had collapsed in the fall. The efforts paid off as a staff member was able to return to school last month, so if you've lost count, that's four Arlington ISD staff members who helped save lives of our staff or our students just in the last three months. We also talk a lot about how outstanding the fine arts are here in Arlington ISD, and you got to see some of our budding artists earlier in this board meeting, thanks to the students at P. elementary and the artwork for our board members. In the latest issue of Texas Art Education Association eMagazine, Arlington High Senior Kara Cloud had her artwork featured on the cover, and Kara's art was also selected as a Gold Seal Arts Work Selection. So we just want to congratulate Kara and tell her way to go. And if you're looking for something fun and free to do on February 7th, head to the Dr. Marcelo Cavasso Center for Visual and Performing Arts, as the United States Navy Band will be performing in concert. The concert is now part of the national tour for the band, which provides family-friendly entertainment for all, and I'd like to thank Dr. Christopher Bryant from the CVPA for working to get this awesome event set up. And since this is my last superintendent's report, I just wanted to personally take a couple of minutes to thank all of you for this extraordinary opportunity. I have sincerely enjoyed serving in this role, getting to know each of you, not only as board members, but as people. I can attest to your heart for kids, your commitment to the staff and students here in Arlington ISD, and your desire to make this the best learning experience for all of our kids. I'm looking forward to returning to my old role as chief academic officer and continuing to serve, and welcoming Dr. Smith, who I know is going to do an outstanding job. I want to extend my personal gratitude to this, to the students and staff. Forgive me if I get emotional for just a second. You've learned that about me. With, to the students and staff here in Arlington ISD, I've had the privilege of working here for 11 years now, and this has been an incredible experience, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of your support and kindness during this transition period, and I'm looking forward to many more years and all the success that will come as Dr. Smith takes the helm. So thank you so much.
We thank you, Dr. Works, for stepping in. You have done an amazing job, and we appreciate you so much. You just never missed a beat. You went from one role right into the other and kept the district going, and we appreciate you so much.
You're welcome.
You're, you're, you're amazing. Do I have any school board members with reports? Ms. Richardson?
I know that it's a new year, and we feel like we've left the holidays behind us, but rewind. This December, I was invited by second grade class by Julie Barnell at Jones Academy, and then by Mrs. Ferguson at Corey Academy to come and read to their second grade students. I had so much fun wearing a reindeer onesie and reading Dasher to their students. They were phenomenal. They welcomed me at both of our fine arts dual-language academies and were wonderful audience members, and they were so kind that they have invited me to come back this spring and wear a pizza costume, but I have to find a book about pizzas, they said. But I'm just glad that we have teachers who know that we are accessible and that we will come to them and get involved, and it's not just about sitting up here. And I know one of the things that Trustee Haynes and I enjoyed was, we were invited a while back to come to Mary Moore and read, and we really enjoy doing that, and so to know that other teachers have heard that we are willing to come out and be involved in the classroom, it means a lot to me that these teachers reach out to us.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, and thank you for your service. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider? Dr. Raich.
I have a costume, too.
Thank you, President Fowler. Yeah, I'll have to think about what kind of costume I might have to go read, and also thinking about maybe Ms. Richardson can come read to us sometime in costume. I just wanted to announce in this forum what I announced last Friday evening, which is that I will not be seeking reelection and have decided to retire from this amazing privilege that I've had for 15 years. I won't go into a long oratory at all, at least at this point. Maybe when you're actually getting rid of me, I will. I don't know. But I, there, there's many, many thought processes that went into it. I know I am leaving this district in amazing hands with my colleagues here, really, each and every one of you. Your hearts and your minds, your skills are just perfect for what this district needs. I truly mean that from the bottom of my heart, and I have every bit of passion to continue, but it's, it's the right time for me to step away and look at you from down there up here and admire your continuing work. The, the work that we do, it's so much bigger than us. It's so important. It is a generational impact. The, the comments that were made when we were receiving our beautiful works of art earlier this evening, we each put those different comments in there, and it's, it's so true, the impact we have, the thought that you all and care that you elicit, you exhibit every, every day to me. It, it's just phenomenal. So it's, it's bittersweet. It really, really is. This has been truly a highlight of my entire life, which is a pretty big statement to make, and it is something I will sorely miss in this capacity. I won't go far. I'm still going to be active and engaged in the community, and I'm always here afterwards to serve you guys in whatever way that you need. I'm just a phone caller, text away at any time. I'm so proud of each of you, and then collectively, we all together are truly making a difference and standing in the gap, and I would like to say that that gap is smaller than it was when I began, and I think it is, but I think for all of us, we're never going to be feeling completely easy unless we close that gap, and we're absolutely not there. There's a lot of work to do still, and I'm so confident in your ability to continue to invest your time and talents and treasures and roll up your sleeves and ask the hard questions. But for me, after May, June, whenever my final is, I will be just watching you guys do it, instead of me up here as well. But it's been, it's been amazing, and from the bottom of my heart, thank you to each, each one of you and to the district staff. What a team of excellence. Dr. Works, you've done an amazing job. I'm really, really excited about Dr. Smith coming in. It was really hard to think about that, to not be part of this team for more than five or six months, but I'm going to pour everything I've got into him, into us, in that amount of time. And the, the level of excellence that everybody in this district portrays is moving. It really is moving. Thank you to each and every one of you. It's, after having done this and been around the state and the country a time or two, we are very different in Arlington ISD. The, the level of thoughtfulness that goes into the execution of every idea and thought and program is just astounding, and that, that is not stopping, it's only accelerating from my observations. And to our, our, our parents and our community out there, it's been a joy. Everybody always says this is a thankless job, and in some regards, it is, but, and we're also accused of the, we're in it for the pay, and I've always said, yep, you're absolutely right, 100%. When that kid walks across that stage for graduation, that's our, that's the pay, that's the, the award, the reward. So if that's news to people, yeah, we are truly volunteers and invest our, our time. But the community, to me, I have felt more warmth and love and kindness than it being a thankless job over this decade and a half. It really have had more people come up and say, thank you for what you're doing, versus just the, the stereotype gripes and complaints and that type of thing. So, yeah, those exist, but they are so much the minority, and that's, that's rewarding to impact truly generational change. Education is the great equalizer, and we're all a part of that. It's, it's going to be really hard for me to, to step away, and please know that during our meetings, both of our presentations tonight that were, I, I'm very sensitive to what I say, and I thought, well, here I go, I'm saying, oh, I did this and I did that, but what, just bear with me, over these next several months, it's more reflection than anything, which is what I did significantly over the holidays to come to this decision. And so just reflecting back on where we were to where we are now, it's, it's just phenomenal, and you all are such key pieces of that in this capacity, in the capacity that you were before here in this elected position. So I just love you guys and love the community. Thank you, but I'm out. But not yet.
We still have you for a few more months, Dr. Raich. And with that, it is 10:14, and we are adjourned. What? What?
We're going into closed meeting.
Oh. Oh. Ms. Secretary?
Just kidding. Sam.
Thank you, President Fowler. I have one item to follow up on. In the interest of achieving the goals outlined in our strategic plan, it was requested by Trustee Richardson that we get, get more information to learn if eighth-grade career tech center tours are facilitated before or after our eighth graders commit to high school courses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. Mr. Eichelbaum?
President Fowler, we still have a grievance, so if we could go into closed at this time under 551074 to discuss the grievance, that would be appropriate.
Thank you, sir. We'll go into closed now. It is now 10:38 on January 18th, 2024, and the board did not take any vote or action in closed meeting. The board has heard the complaint of Martha Munez. Do I hear a motion? Dr. Raich?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to table. Martha Munez is Level 4 hearing at her request.
Thank you, Dr. Raich. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second for Mr. Will Banks. Please vote. Oh, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Fowler. I will be abstaining on this vote and on any vote in connection with this grievance due to the fact that I was personally involved in the underlying allegations, and although not involving me personally, I feel like in a, to avoid the appearance of impropriety, I will recuse myself from this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Please vote. The vote is 6-4 and one abstention, and the motion carries. We are now adjourned.